No matter what age your child is, you want the best for their future. What do they want to do after graduation? What career path do they want to take? These questions can be overwhelming. That's why you should ask them this question. What's your E? Seminole County Public Schools E-Pathway program is designed for your student to choose their own path in life from as many options as we can offer. Whether they're looking to enlist, enroll, or be employed, we're excited to help you and your child make it happen. Want them to enroll in a college or university? We'll help you find the best school for them to continue their education. Learn about grants and programs to help your child obtain their degree at a pace and a cost that works for you both. Are they looking to go straight into employment? Discover a variety of trades and skills that will propel their future. They can learn aviation maintenance, automotive repair, culinary arts, and more to hone their talents in growing industries. Is your child interested in enlistment? We'll help them find the right path of service, whether it's military, law enforcement, fire response, or EMS. They can serve the community while learning skills that will last a lifetime. What's your E? Explore options with E-Pathways by visiting us online at the link below.
Mr. Cortez, he's a bright young man. When I first met him, he was kind of timid. But I've grown to learn more about him, the struggles that he's been through, the transformation that he's been through in like the last five months is incredible. I'm actually really proud of him and what he's gone through and how he's changing through my program.
I joined JRC by accident. My guidance council suggested it. I didn't want to do it at all, but had to do it. I planned on just joining a semester. And I ended up loving the course, instructors, every one of my friends that I've made here in JRC. And my whole high school life is just surrounded basically on JRC.
Kedet Cortez, like I said earlier, was, um, he's a lot like some of the students who come in here. He does have a lot of natural leadership ability. I think ROTC gave him an opportunity to use that in a course, in a class of students and his peers. And because of that, he's had a very good rapport with other students. Extremely beneficial. It's a great leadership opportunity for him. It's also a great leadership opportunity for people around him to see how he acts, how he takes care of himself and other people. And the leadership that he does, he gets into a common ground with these students and explains how things should be done. They look at him, they don't look at him as he's any different, they just look like he's doing it better. So he's leading by example, which is a perfect example of what we want for students here in ROTC.
Well, before JRC, I was kind of back kid, rebellious. Didn't listen to my parents. I didn't want to really be in school. Joining JRC, instructors taught me discipline. They taught me how to be a better version of myself. And throughout the years, I've become, I did become a better version of myself. Became more respectful towards elders or peers around me. I became more aware of other people's feelings as well as how to deal with certain emotions of mine and how to lead overall.
And he started to excel. And he started hanging around with the right group of people who helped him excel. And in the end, he took his natural leadership ability, accentuated it, and became a leader inside the Air Force Junior ROTC program.
So I also wanted to join the Marine Corps because my dad is ill and he has many kids. And I know that it will be a struggle for him to pay for all that college tuition for us. And I just wanted to help him out. So I know that the military helps with schooling. And I just know that I want to make him proud. I want to make him proud that he has an excellent son, that I will succeed. So I think that joining the military and being able to succeed throughout not only military, but university as well will be very exciting for myself and for my dad.
Good evening, everyone. If you'll please take your seats, we'll get started. Member Davis? Thank you. Welcome, everyone. What a fabulous audience we have this evening. I called to order the September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three School Board meeting. Please let the record reflect that. Member Davis, Member Garrick, Member Pennick, Vice Chair Sanchez, and myself are present along with Superintendent Beaman, Attorney Cole Palmer, and our Board Clerk Jill. This evening, uh, we'll call Dr. Gard Harold. You are introducing the invoker. Thank you.
Good evening. There we go. Good evening, Chair Kraus, Vice Chair Sanchez, uh, School Board members, and Ms. Beaman. Uh, I am pleased to introduce Megan Arnott. Megan is a junior at the Academy of Health Careers at Seminole High School. She serves as a Health Occupation Student of America Vice President for her region, is a member of the Leadership Club, a member of National Honor Society, and serves on Seminole High School's School Advisory Council. She excels academically and is passionate about the field of healthcare. Following her graduation in two thousand twenty-five, McKenna plans to attend college with a major in nursing. She is supported here this evening by Assistant Principal of Seminole High School, Ms. Shelley Prom. And at this time, I would like to welcome McKenna Arnott to the microphone to give the invocation.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Seminole County School Board. Uh, thank you for that wonderful introduction. The opportunity to speak to you all encompasses the nature of Health Academy, a program that offers unique experiences unavailable anywhere else. These opportunities allow us to learn about different medical careers, provide a foundation in the field of medicine, gain invaluable hands-on experience, and set us up for success after graduation by offering career certifications. This program changes the lives of students today so that we may be prepared to save lives tomorrow. I joined Health Academy with no direction. I had no clear plan of after high school. I knew I wanted to go into the medical field, and that was about as far as I got. It was under my teacher's guise and the informative curriculum that I could begin to take an informed action about my career. I decided to pursue nursing after hearing the experiences of my teachers who worked in that field and the impact I could make on the lives of my te- of parents, sorry, patients. Uh, I speak for myself and on the behalf of my peers when I say that this program has impacted my future in so many ways. Learning from doctors, nurses, paramedics, and other medical professionals has provided unique insight on careers and given me guidance on my future. I would like to thank teachers for making learning engaging, the administrators that facilitate the program, and the School Board for their continued to, continued support. And presently, all of you here today for providing me a platform to speak about the program that benefits my peers and the, and our community in an immeasurable way. So thank you. I would invite you all to stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for the invocation. Uh, Ms. Marimus, do we have any acknowledgements this evening? Uh, Ms. Katie Murphy from Seminole County Council PTA, please wave to us. Thank you for being here this evening. Thank you. Superintendent, do you have any agenda modifications?
Yes, the addendum for good cause is on our electronic agenda by a green flag named addendum item. I am pulling Board Members, Item Three A I, the Health Academy presentation, and it will be brought back to you at a later meeting.
Thank you. Board members, the roll call order this evening is Vice Chair Sanchez, Member Pennick, Member Davis, Member Garrick, and then myself. Vice Chair, do you have any agenda modifications? No modifications, thank you. Member Pennick?
No, ma'am.
Member Davis?
No modifications.
Member Garrick?
No modifications.
Okay, and I will be pulling Item eleven A, and we'll bring that update to the October tenth meeting. Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Member Vice Chair Sanchez, and seconded by Pennick. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Um, Superintendent, do we have any presentations?
Yes, we do. We'll get started with our Veteran of the Month, who will be introduced by Mr. Gaffney, Principal of Winter Springs High School.
Good evening. It is my absolute pleasure to be here tonight to introduce our Seminole County Public School Veteran of the Month, Mr. Slade Massey of Winter Springs High School. We asked Slade to put a little bit of, uh, of his tenure in writing. Military service was a family tradition for me. Both my mother and my father have served, but in completely different militaries. My mother was British Royal Paratrooper, and my father served career in the United States Army. Growing up in a military household, service was something that came naturally. Upon graduation from high school, I enlisted into the United States Army after watching one too many recruitment videos determined infantry and special weapons was the path I wanted. Next thing I knew, I was in Fort Benning, home of the Infantry for Training. After completion of my contract, I transitioned into the Reserve Unit and attended UCF. While attending college, I was recruited into active statutes to serve in multiple combat deployments, some lasting over a year in deployment time. By the time my first tour was over, I had earned Combat Infantry Badge for Confirmed Engagements with Enemy Combats. Between deployments, I finished up college and continued my military career, eventually working into special weapons in which field-tested the latest in weapons and recon technology. Sadly, my military career was cut short during long-range combat operations in Iraq in two thousand ten, when I sustained a career-ending injury. During this time, the Army did everything possible to make sure I was able to transition into a civilian career, which brings me to how I am a teacher today. I started my career at Lake Hall High School, teaching social studies, transitioned to middle school for a few years, before finally finding my forever home at Winter Springs High School. Go Bears! Once again, big round of applause for Mr. Slade Matthew Massey, Veteran of the Month.
Okay, Board Members and Superintendent Beaman, we are happy to announce two elementary assistant principals tonight. First up is the new Assistant Principal at Wakava Elementary, Mallory Garrett. Ms. Garrett holds a bachelor's degree in secondary education and English Language Arts from the University of South Alabama, and a master's degree in ed leadership from the University of West Florida. She's in her fifth year in Seminole County and has also worked in Osceola County. Mrs. Garrett has been a dean, AIP teacher, avid teacher, and intensive reading teacher. Family members with her tonight are her husband Christian and daughter Millie. And Millie steals the show. Congratulations to Mallory Garrett. All right, next is the new Assistant Principal at Parton Elementary, Jeff Townsend. Mr. Townsend is in his twenty-sixth year in education. He began his career in Orange County Public Schools and then transferred to Seminole County. He received his bachelor's degree from the University of Central Florida, master's of science in math from the Lockheed Martin UCF program, and a specialist degree in ed leadership from the University of Central Florida. Jeff has worked at Lawton, Longwood, Oviedo High School, and Winter Springs Elementary. He has taught first, third, fourth, and fifth grades. He's been an educational technology facilitator, a makerspace teacher, and a school administration manager, and is now proud to be a Parton All-Star. Family members with Jeff tonight are his wife Diane, his daughter Avery, son Bryce, and Jeff's parents Jerry and Patricia Townsend. And also, proud principal Martha Garcia from Parton. Congratulations again to Jeff Townsend.
Superintendent, I will turn it back over to you for district highlights.
Okay, for our focus on student achievement, tonight we'll have Assistant Superintendent Mr. Rice and team to talk about the high school expedition overview from this summer. So turning it over to you all.
Well, good evening, Board Members and Superintendent Beaman. Thanks for having us here tonight. We are very excited to share with you a program that has been in existence for a while. Um, but we put a team together this past year, and we are so proud to share with you the, uh, the new summer expedition program, a little modification of our future or our former transition program. So I'm going to jump right into it and give you a little bit of history here as to what we have done previously. Back in about thirteen years ago, um, Dr. Griffin, uh, when he was in the seat that I'm in as the Executive Director of High Schools, he saw a need for our students who are at risk, um, in Seminole County, going from eighth grade to ninth grade, and said, there was a need to develop a program to help them to transition from middle school eighth grade to high school. Um, and so at that time, they started the transition program. Uh, there was a grant that came along with that. Um, and over the last thirteen years, we've been working under the, the transition program the way that we knew it. As you see some of the data here, um, we saw the, the data for the last several years, and we said, you know, there's some things that we're doing really well, and I'm going to talk about what the program looked like. Um, but we also said, there, there's a little need to make some updates to the program and to improve some things that just over the last thirteen years have either fallen off, or we needed to make some updates to help the students as they changed in the last several years. And so as you see here with the data, um, in the class of two thousand twenty-three, and keep in mind, these are students that entered in, uh, two thousand nineteen in high school. Um, we had a total of six hundred and forty-nine students from this grouping enter high school. Over the four years of them being in a school, one hundred and sixty-eight of them traveled or transferred outside of Seminole County Public Schools to another district, um, or to another location out of state. Um, of those six hundred and forty-nine students, three hundred and sixty-four of them graduated. Ninety-five of them were non-graduates, and twenty-two remained in the district. Now, as we track our, our high school graduation rate, you can see on here in bold are the numbers that go into that, that graduation rate calculation. So of the students that, um, did not transfer out of the cohort, so that does not count towards that grad rate, uh, we had seventy-five percent of the students that graduated from this transition program. So our hope in doing the revision here is that we will take the opportunity to improve on that number um, and work to improve some of the past practices. Some of those practices included, um, the summer transition program was our math, science, and ELA-focused program, where we helped give, give the students the skills that they needed to grow um, and be prepared for high school. They also learned about the high school atmosphere, met the principal, and did a lot of activities on the campus to become familiar with the high school atmosphere before they got on campus. So as we met about a year ago, um, we said, what could this look like? And you're going to hear from the team a little bit here. Brittany is going to share a little bit about what, uh, we did over the last year. Uh, we said, what can we do to help our students to not only be better in the skills where there might be some deficits and where they, they have become at risk? Um, and how can we connect them to high school a little bit more? How can we connect them and prepare them for life after high school to make their time in high school more successful? And so that's what you're going to hear as we go through the program here tonight, is how this team said, let's come up with a program called Summer Expedition. Let's take our students on a, uh, an adventure. And let's give them a little bit of an experience and some excursions to really help provide them with some, um, some experiences that'll lead to their post-secondary success. As you see here, um, we got, we got a little, had a little fun and dressed up and had a little excursion as we shared to cabinet, uh, several months back. Um, and we had Brittany Campbell was our, our lead for this adventure, and she took on a lot of the organizational strategies back in the back. I know Kathy Aslan from Lake Mary High School is here, Jacob Jarzinka, Seminole High School, and then Dr. Jamie Washington from the Ninth Grade Center. They all came together, as you see here, and had a little fun with getting the students prepared and the teachers prepared this year. Um, so our criteria for our students that we, uh, select for this program is they are typically our at-risk students, our students that are needing a little bit more supports to make sure they're, they're ready for high school. Um, and we, we also focus on our students that are assigned to high school. What that means is if you, um, complete that, the middle school with a two-point-oh GPA, you're on track for continued success in high school, then you are, you are promoted to high school. You can play in extracurricular activities, you can play in sports, and you can be, uh, a part of the high school atmosphere, just like all the other students. When you're assigned, you have a little bit more limited. We want to focus on the academics while you're there, and so you're not able to do some of the sports and extra activities. So we focus on those students, and if they go to the program, they can then, and complete the program, they can then be promoted and participate in all the activities, um, that next school year. Uh, we also focus on students below the two-point-oh GPA, uh, students with a Level One and/or Level Two on the FSA, now transitioning to the FAST Assessment and on their ELCs. And we also give our, our middle school principals the opportunity to say, the student may not fit one of these criteria, but we think this would be a great program for the student, uh, in the summertime. So as we move forward, as we, um, look at the class of two thousand twenty-seven, and you see our logo at the top has that, and each year we're going to update the logo with the incoming class. Um, you could see that we had four hundred and thirty-four students overall that registered for the program. Three hundred and thirty-three participated in the program, so seventy-six percent participation. Um, and so we saw a lot of, uh, great results from this, which you'll hear about as Brittany talks in a few minutes here. Um, but of course, we always want to get a hundred percent, get to that hundred percent. That's a goal that we have in moving forward, is, you know, what practices can we improve on in, in marketing this and getting our parents and our students and our teachers, um, bought into this program? As we move forward with this, we're not only going to look at just the graduation rate of these students, but we also want to do a little bit more of tracking all the way through their high school years. So every semester, we're going to look at our students' GPA, we're going to look at their attendance, credits earned, the, um, discipline side of the house, and, and suspensions maybe, and alternative placements, as well as, of course, their graduation rate. Um, we're also going to do an analysis, and we want to see, how has this program supported and impacted our students who went through the summer program between their eighth grade and ninth grade year versus those that decided not to participate and register when we, um, put that invite out? That'll give us a little more data to see the impact that this program's having, to be able to report back to you on a yearly basis. And of course, after four years, we'll be able to see the impact that this had. So I'm going to have Brittany, um, to kind of talk you through some of the creative ideas. They did an amazing job of putting this together, and, um, just so proud of the work that they did as a, as a team to, to prepare this program.
Absolutely. Thank you guys for having, having.
Thank you guys for having me here. So with your support and the support of ePathways and us teaming up together, we were really able to help our students find their E through what's their, for what's their Y, or find their Y through what's their E. So with Dr. Jamie Washington, she led the way for ethos, where we used the School Connect lessons and allowed students to really prepare themselves mentally for the day. Kathy Aslan led the way for enroll, where the students did their student self-interests and talked about all the different types of certifications and degrees that they can earn after high school. And Jacob Jarzinka led the way for employee, where they really focused on the mindset of entrepreneurship, where we actually had hands-on excursions, where students went and learned about different job opportunities. And then I led the way for enlist, where the students got to meet with their principals and really do service learning projects to get familiar with their campus and actually contribute to something that was happening on their campus, to feel a part of their campus, plus explore all the different types of military branches that they could explore after high school. Then with the extend piece, we plan on taking the students this year to, in January, to go to Seminole State, so they can actually experience what a college campus is like. We're going to sit down with them to talk about their current grades, what are their current classroom practices, and then talk about setting future goals for what they plan on doing and what they've learned in the summer expedition program and what they've learned in their high school career as well. Also with the extension piece, we are teaming up with a team of teachers and ePathways, again, to maybe do, or to not maybe, but to do that extension of year two, to grow this program and to help prepare the students that just went through it to be mentors for the students that are going to be coming into next year as well. So here is just a little glimpse of one of the weeks that the students encountered on their expedition. As you can see, that was one of our Top Golf excursion, where every campus got to take the students to Top Golf, and they actually got to see the in or out, like, all the different job opportunities. I didn't even know how many job opportunities Top Golf has, but they got to explore that and have a little fun and play a little bit. As you can see, we have ethos every single day, and that was that School Connect mindfulness that really prepared the students for all the different types of things that we face, not just as students, but just as people. We also had some Army speakers, the school counselor came in and spoke to the students. We did have different military branches as well. We had an employee lesson every single day for them to, again, connect with that entrepreneurship. The kids did do some of the Florida Ready-to-Work Program. That was great for them, to teach them those on-the-job training skills. And then we also did the service learning project that week, which, again, the students met with their principals individually and had different projects depending on what the campus and what the need was of the principal. So we surveyed all the students, so a survey was sent out. About 56% of them actually filled it out, which was pretty good. And as you can see in the first data point, 51% of the students said no, that summer expedition was not what they expected. And when I went to visit every single campus and I asked the students, like, hey, how's it going? What did you expect summer expedition was going to be? And most of them said, I thought we were going to be doing like 50 math problems a day and reading a lot of stories. And I'm like, well, how's it going? And they're like, this is great. I'm actually learning skills that I'm going to need in the real world, and I'm making connections to what it's like to be in high school, which was fantastic. In the second data point, I actually had them rate their feeling about the summer expedition program, and as you can see, 70% of the children said they liked coming to summer school. Like, unbelievable. Only 2%, which is really one student, said that they did not like it. Most of them didn't like it because they didn't like getting up that early, was, for the most part. On the third bullet point, as you can see, it does ask, did they feel like they were better prepared? And about 75, or 70% of the students said yes, they felt better prepared making those connections on school campus. It's easy to read those data points for sure in looking at the survey, but let's actually hear from one of our students. Our freshman Timothy Matucci actually goes to Croons Academy, so here is his insight.
Hello, I'm a freshman at Croons Academy, and what I expected to be at the summer expedition was to be miserable and get a lot of work. But I experienced meeting new friends, how to communicate efficiently, and getting to know the variety of job avenues and getting to my campus. We got to go on many field trips like Top Golf and the Sanford Police Department, and they taught us about the different jobs associated with them. Overall, my experience was really fun, and I got to meet many new friends and helped me prepare for high school.
So also on the student survey, I did an optional comment where they could actually, if they wanted to, leave a comment or not. It was a total optional. About 70% of the students actually decided to write a comment, so I just put a couple up there for you guys to just read exactly what they wrote. So we, of course, surveyed the teachers as well, because we wanted to hear from them as well. So about 70% of the students, our teachers, actually filled out the results. And what I did in the first bullet point was have the teachers rate their student engagement, what they thought the level was of student engagement. And as you can see within enlist, it was down a little bit. So when I asked the teachers why, they felt like some of the service learning projects that the principals asked them to do wasn't very interesting, so they didn't really engage much with that. But that's why that's going to drive us with the, also the two other questions up there, with what they liked about the summer expedition and what they would like to change, that's going to drive us to have that team of teachers that we can work with, to get their feedback, to then work with them on the curriculum, to try to get that enlist participation back up to where it needs to be. So at each campus, we had a unique experience. So starting with Crooms, we took them to the Sanford Police Station, where they learned the different types of job opportunities that a local police station has. Hagerty, that is one of their service learning projects. The students actually built that movable planter, planted the plants, and made a schedule on who was going to take care of it throughout the school year. At Lake Brantley, the students decided they wanted to do positive posters, which they created themselves and hung them around the school campus. At Lake Howell, that is their picture at the summer expedition for the excursion at Top Golf, but they also had Lieutenant Torres from the Seminole Fire Department, who was a graduate of Lake Howell, come and speak to them about the different opportunities during public, for public safety. And then also at Lake Mary, we had the battalion chief, Baker, come and speak to the Lake Mary students about the different opportunities that there are in public service. Lyman is sitting together, talking about and planning their service learning project, which is their campus beautification. Oviedo had the Oviedo Fire Department come out and actually teach the kids about their public safety and the different types of fire trucks and what you can do with them and what you can't do with them. Seminole's Ninth Grade Center took the students at the end to congratulate them for a successful summer expedition, but then also learn about the job opportunities that they could also have at the airport bowling lanes. And then Winter Springs had Gatorland come with a guest speaker to talk to them about their different opportunities that they have at their facility, including a bunch of animals that were they able to talk to the students about as well.
So as you can see, it was a very unique program, something different than we've done in the summertime for our students. And I think really what was amazing is when you go out to the campuses and visit, like Brittany was talking about, not only were the students excited and enthused about being a part of this and happy, believe it or not, to be there for the summertime, but the teachers really just had a renewed and just a rejuvenation to them, and they just were very excited that not only were they teaching, of course, about the enlist, enrollment, and the E's that we've been really focused on, but they had the opportunity to do that and infuse some INGO strategies and stuff into these career and other focuses that we had. So it was just a different feel. We did some training with the teachers at the beginning of the summer, and it just seemed like they were excited to be there, and at the end, I think they were just relieved to know, wow, we can do something different and really get our kids to be excited about it. So thank you for this opportunity to share this here, this great adventure and expedition that we went on this summer, and we're going to hopefully bring back some great news as we continue the program over the next four years for these students and beyond.
Board members, any questions or comments? The roll call order tonight, Vice Chair Sanchez, Member Pennick, Member Davis, Member Garrick, and then myself. Vice Chair, any comments?
First of all, thank you both so much, and to all the teachers that dedicated countless hours for working on this amazing project. I love it, this passport excursion and being able to find their E and the reasons why, and being able to include everything around it, instead of just math being, you know, in one area and ELA in another. But like the beautification project, you can do math through that, you can do science through that, you can do all that, and that's what I would love to see every classroom look like, every year, every day. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Member Pennick?
Thank you. I appreciated the students' feedback in that they learned real-world skills, which they need, and I think some of our students struggle from that eighth grade to ninth grade year, kind of finding their Y and their group and their fitting in, and so I'm excited to see this. I love the feedback, and I hope that we can expand it in the future.
Thank you. Member Davis?
It's a wonderful job. It seems like everybody enjoyed it. It's nice to see them do something different and make friends early before they actually get to the high school. So it's always good for especially kids who, you know, are more nervous about going to a bigger school, it's nice to have friends already. The other thing is that before they go to high school, that's the time when they need to kind of decide their path, and of course, we have the ePathways that, you know, they can decide to start doing some training, you know, for a career. But they're learning the requirements also, if they want to go to college, if they, you know, want to enlist to the military. You need to start looking at those options before you're actually in high school, because you have to map out what courses you want to take. So I really appreciate that you're targeting this particular group, because it is, it is the, one of the hardest transitions for students to do is from middle to high school. If you can make it any easier for them and get them focused on what they're going to do in the next four years, I think it's just wonderful. So we really appreciate it. Thank you so much for showing us.
Absolutely. And I want to add too that when we go to Seminole State, as Ms. Campbell was talking about, that'll be some of our focus as well, is understand your GPA, understand what you've done well, what you want to continue, but also you're about to get into your scheduling season, so what courses and what programs on your campus are available to you to help continue to provide that next step for you? So, very excited about that.
Member Garrick?
Well, I just wanted to say thank you both for your part in this phenomenal program. Anecdotally, I've heard that our students, particularly in high school, are having a very successful year. So, and we all know that engaged students are successful students, so thank you for creating this program in which they can develop connections and become a part of their high school.
And I would just add, thank you to all of the team that put this together for the benefit of our students. Would have loved this for my kids back in the day, so we're very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, at this time, Attorney Cole Palmer, did you need to ask for a meeting? I have that on my notes.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Chair. At this time, I would ask the, I would ask that we have an attorney-client executive session on September 25th, 2023, at 10:00 a.m. for advice from the board on pending litigation, the litigation being that Manus versus Seminole County Board, case number 622 CV1014-RBD DCI. Present at the litigation executive session will be, of course, all of us with our outside counsel, Cindy Townsend, as well as a court reporter. Thank you.
Thank you. And Clerk, you'll put that on our calendars. Thank you very much. It is now time for the first board discussion. Vice Chair Sanchez. Nope. Your committee.
No comments.
Thank you. Member Pennick?
I don't have any as well.
Member Davis?
I just want to remind everybody, for the teachers only, or the staff only, and our transportation team, dining team, all of the employees of Seminole County Public Schools are invited to the Top Golf Mental Health Awareness Program. It's on the 28th, from 5:00 to 9:00. It's free to all employees. We're not inviting family this time, but it'll be fun to get to know each other. They have golf, of course, they have a lot of wellness programs, they have yoga, they have massages, they're going to feed you dinner. So it's not too late to sign up for that. So if you want to get online and register for that, it's coming up very quickly now. Okay?
Thank you. Member Garrick?
I would just like to express my gratitude to our attorney, Cole Palmer, as well as the staff for being so diligent about answering all the questions that I had regarding our policy updates and all of the items on the agenda that we will be reviewing this evening.
Thank you so much. And I just had a brief comment before we begin the public comment section. I would just like to add a special request. I believe that we have an audience with very diverse opinions, and I want you to know that your comments are welcome. We need to hear your concerns as well. This is a great opportunity to show our students civil discourse, and I emphasize the word civil. We can teach them how it's done. As you will note, our fellow board members are fully engaged, and they, you know, refrain from commenting before all of the speakers have had the opportunity to share dialogue for the time. And audience, I request that you may thumbs up or thumbs down, but please refrain from clapping and cheering and booing and hissing. We expect a quorum, and we'll ask that you have respect for the work of this board. Thank you very much. Okay, public comments, agenda items, would you read the script for me, please?
Policy 0169.1, public participation at board meetings. I'm not sure if it's going to be up on the screen or not. Okay. The purpose of public participation segments of the board meeting is to allow the public to address matters within the board's jurisdiction and not to resolve individual grievances or disputes. Public comments related to education, the board agenda, and the district are welcome and encouraged, but public comment segments are not forums to engage in personal attacks against school system, employees, or board members. To maintain orderly conduct, the public comments segments of the meeting may be used as open forums to discuss matters unrelated to education, to support or oppose candidates, may not, sorry. I knew I was forgetting a word in there. To support or oppose candidates for public office, including presentation of political and/or campaign issues, announcing candidacy and/or campaigning, or to engage in commercial speech attempting to sell a service or product to the board or to the public. Nor are they forums to address matters involving disciplinary actions of any kind, pending claims, complaints, or litigation against the district or district personnel. Public comment segments durations are as follows. Agenda items, limited to three minutes. One group representative speaking on a proposition, maximum of six minutes. Speaker must remain on topic, agenda item proposition. Non-agenda items are limited to two minutes. Speakers shall direct their comments only to the board members and may not address the audience or other speakers. No speaker may yield his or her time to any other person. Generally, substitutions of speakers will not be allowed. Thank you.
Thank you all. Our first three speakers, I would ask that you line up against the wall. The first speaker, agenda-related, Raquel Molino, Jessica Tillman, and Thomas TJ Bergus.
Let me know when I'm ready, when you're ready.
If you would please state your name and county, and you're speaking on agenda item, the Kid House.
The Kid House and regards to the superintendent.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. I was extremely, I'm sorry, my name is Raquel Molina.
Thank you.
I was extremely surprised to see the Kid House agreement on the agenda today. Kid House is a nonprofit organization representing hopeful victims of child abuse, and its mission is to aid child abuse victims and families by providing coordinated services in a safe, child-friendly environment for report and investigation throughout treatment. child-friendly environment for report and investigation throughout treatment and resolution. My question to you all, if the abuse is by a Seminole County Public School employee, will Seminole County Public School and the Kid House be protecting the school's reputation or the student's safety and well-being first? Hopefully, Kid House will never cover up abuse the same way Seminole County Public School admin and leadership covered up my daughter's abuse while in Lyman High School. Failing to report reasonable suspicion of abuse is a crime. Yet, federal officials and experts, and experts told CBS News that they believe school admins often do not contact law enforcement for fear of damaging the reputation of a teacher or the school's reputation, which, that's true. Many parents do not trust administrators in Seminole County Public School, so why would we trust the Kid House without children? My daughter's abuse was all swept under the rug, and the two bad apples are still working in Seminole County Public School, and that really pisses me off. If I ever die of my brain tumor, I hope and pray that all those individuals that are covering up abuse are exposed, fired, and behind bars. I pray for that. Whenever I, I'm sorry, the Trump mugshot photo, whenever he, the high school superintendent, Mr. Rice, and fake board members, and superintendent lying about Seminole County Public School is a A-rated school district, et cetera. With all due respect, Mr. Beeman, oh, I was going to say in regards to Trump, and I know you're not, the look on his mugshot is the same look whenever I look at you guys lying about how this school district is A-rated and how things are so marvelous with the children's education. I'm fighting for our future generation because you guys have, you guys are doing a terrible job. Superintendent, you may be a good friend, a good attorney, district attorney, you were good. I can say that. But as a superintendent, I'm sorry, you're not protecting the child's best interest. So, there, I disagree that you're doing a good job.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Jessica Tillman, followed by TJ Burgos, followed by Sandy Stenoff.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Tillman, and I'm the chair, chapter chair for Moms for Liberty, Seminole County, and will be speaking on behalf of my chapter. We want to get for minors. We have warned that there are pornographic books in Seminole County for more than a year. As Moms for Liberty, we've made plenty of local news and even national news on this issue. We've served on local and state committees.
Ms. Tillman, is this related to an agenda item?
It sure is. Yes, ma'am.
In which?
The superintendent evaluation.
We remove that to consider on 1010. Can you speak, finish your statements at the non-agenda portion?
I will save it for 1010 then. Thank you.
Thank you. TJ Burgos, followed by Sandy Stenoff. Good evening.
Good evening, School Board. Superintendent Beeman, my name is Thomas Joe Bugus II. I represent the Seminole Education Association. I'd first like to take this time to apologize. In a previous public speaking agenda, I misspoke and I inadvertently said the School Board was inviting a certain group here this evening. I meant to state that they were simply being invited to the meeting tonight to generate other people to counter their position. But I am here to speak tonight about 6:00 a.m., and that is the ratification of our current contract. And I would like to thank you very much for completing this at a very early stage, and I do appreciate the fact that you came to the table ready to bargain with us. I would like to say it's not enough. We are really struggling. You have veteran teachers of 20 years with compressed wages that are really struggling to even keep up with the cost of living. And after 20 years getting the same amount of money as a first-year teacher, it's very difficult to convince a veteran teacher to help that new teacher that needs all the support because this is one of the most difficult jobs in this country. Actually raising the children, dealing with the public, dealing with parents, dealing with administration, dealing with own personal challenges, and then on top of it to have financial challenges to go along with it. So, I would request that we really try on our next bargaining session to look at how we can support these veteran teachers that have made this in a district. So, thank you this evening and hope to hear from you later. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Stenoff?
Good evening. Superintendent Beeman, Chair Kraus, Vice Chair Sanchez, Members Pennick, Garrick, and Davis, thank you for this opportunity to address the banning of books in the district as it relates to student achievement in Seminole County, Agenda Item 3A. Thank you. When a book gets challenged or banned, someone else is trying to decide what is best for everyone based on his or her own beliefs and feelings. If they succeed, people can no longer access these books. When this happens, these individuals don't consider the negative effects it can have on students and teachers. For students, banning books means narrowing their worldview. For teachers, it means an ever-changing curriculum and fear of personal choice. Book banning is one of the most common ways to censor education. What are the benefits of having a diverse perspective and characters in the K-12 curriculum? Many K-12 students don't have the luxury of being able to travel beyond their local communities. Books help students learn about the vast world they may not be able to physically access. Stories help students build empathy. Diverse characters and points of view bring the world to life. Beyond building empathy for others, diverse perspective and characters help children think through history, ideas, and concepts from different angles. This is an essential skill for critical thinking, which serves students throughout their lifetimes. How book banning impacts students? Those who are affected the most by book banning are the students in the classroom. When books are banned or challenged, the footing of the curriculum becomes unstable. By opening children up to places, people, and different cultures, books help children develop empathy for others. By nature, children are very self-focused. It's hard for them to imagine different experiences and lives outside of their own. Books help them to do this. Books show representation of different people and situations different from their own and can teach them empathy. Books also provide representation to children who come from marginalized communities. When you take these books away from students, it gives them a narrow way of looking at the world. Students will not be able to understand different cultures, worldviews, religions, et cetera, if individuals keep banning books that have these elements. Limiting access to books might solve one family's concerns about their child reading a particular text, but it removes the opportunity from another child. Book banning has a ripple effect that impinges the rights of other readers. While families have the right to restrict their own children from reading certain books, they can't enforce that on other families. Banning books also has the potential to create significant gaps in knowledge for young learners. Whether it is a canonical classic or a new book that is banned, book banning and limiting access have the potential to leave students behind their peers.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
I, it is an agenda item, and I'm speaking for the Opt Out Florida Network. I'm sorry, I didn't say that before.
Order, please.
Sorry, could you repeat that?
I'm speaking for the Opt Out Florida Network and advocacy group for public education. May I finish?
Okay, three minutes.
Three minutes. Thank you. While I strongly disagree with the use of standardized tests to be the final measure of achievement.
Order, please.
It is generally accepted that the more widely read a student is, the more successful they're likely to be in testing, upon which our teachers, schools, and funding depend. So, limiting students' access to books does not help students. It hurts them and our schools. Book banning is about the suppression of ideas. The American Library Association emphasizes that imposing information restraints on a free people is far more dangerous than any ideas that may be expressed in that information. By restricting information and discouraging freedom of thought, censors undermine one of the primary functions of education, teaching students how to think for themselves. Such actions assert free speech proponents, endanger tolerance, free expression, and democracy. In spite of the countless passages in the Bible, which may be objectionable and offensive to some, I don't want the Bible banned. I want to point out the Moms for Liberty's double standard in not also targeting the Bible for banning, even though the good book is filled with morally questionable actions, including incest, bestiality, graphic depictions of horse and donkey genitalia, rape, murder, genocide, xenophobia, adultery, lewdness, and if reviewed by the same standards as their target list, would be found pornographic. Books teach empathy by helping readers to understand things they might never experience in their own lives, good and bad. They learn how people might experience trauma, hatred, violence, and how that affects characters. Adolescents are resilient, more than that. They are smart, and they know when they're being spoon-fed sugar-coated fairy tales, and they're not interested. Ask them. We know that reading and talking about suicidal ideation does not lead to suicidal teens to commit suicide, but may actually help them to vocalize fears so that they can overcome these ideations. The survival of students in distress is student achievement. Same for sex and pregnancy. Better sex education helps to reduce teen pregnancy by delaying first sexual experiences for many more teens. So, students need to have access to more works of literature that reflect their lived experiences, not fewer. The books that the world calls immoral are the books that show the world its own shame. That's Oscar Wilde. Fiction helps readers to see worlds unknown to them, perhaps for the first time ever. They are about the ability of the human spirit to challenge and triumph over some of the gravest injustices and worst things human beings can do and have done to each other.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Order, please. Thank you.
There were no clarifying questions. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Member Pennick, is there a second?
Second.
Vice Chair Sanchez, is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, 5-0. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation regarding new business?
Yes, that the School Board of Seminole County approve Resolution 2023-11, approving the service agreement incorporating the performance agreement for Comfort from Train U.S. Inc., master lease purchase agreement with TD Equipment Finance Incorporated, and the escrow agreement with TD Bank, and also grant the superintendent and chair the authority to sign any additional documents related to Resolution 2023-11.
Motion.
Motion by Member Pennick. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Garrick. Is there any discussion about this? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Superintendent, do you have another recommendation?
Yes, that the School Board of Seminole County approve the utilization of bid 23240023PB-GL. That's the Omnia Partners Region 4 Office, RFP 22-15, Energy Solutions with Train U.S. Inc.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Member Pennick, is there a second?
Second.
Member Sanchez, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Superintendent, do you have a report?
There are a number of things that are in the agenda book, and as Dr. Scanlon moves to the podium, just wanted to say that, one, that there's been some information that's been provided to you all as it relates to University of Florida and the work that will happen here in Seminole County on October 10. So, we're excited to engage in that work as it relates to professional development in math, also at our community kind of listening tour and opportunities there. So, you'll be hearing more about that. And also wanted to just give a shout out to a number of individuals that we had the opportunity to celebrate. In our most recent school visits at Lake Oriente and Jackson Heights, we had an opportunity to talk with teachers and support individuals and students that were really moving the needle forward and some of the initiatives that the principal is interested in making sure happens on their campus. For Lake Oriente, it was building community and relationships. That was the focus. And we had an opportunity to celebrate Gillian Crosby as our teacher, Norma George as the support staff, and our student Faith Kelly from 4th grade. And in Jackson Heights, teacher Mr. Mason, support staff Robert Oakwin Jr., and student Deepak Marpu. So, we've had some great visits and opportunities to celebrate all of the individuals that's making the campuses really, really come alive this year. So, and now I will ask Dr. Scanlon to give an update on library media materials and kind of the, the way that we have as a district manage the legislation updates and the materials and throughout our district. I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Scanlon.
Good evening, Chair Kraus, Vice Chair Sanchez, board members, and Superintendent Beeman. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to provide this update on our school libraries. For the purpose of this presentation, I thought it would be helpful to provide definitions to distinguish between a school library media center and classroom libraries. The library media center or school library is a physical room in the school that maintains books, ebooks, periodicals, and videos that are accessible to all students within the building, whereas classroom libraries are those materials maintained by teachers in their classroom or as part as a grade-level reading list. Additionally, I want to share the objectives of our school libraries, which is aligned to the Florida Department of Education's objectives toward libraries. The primary objectives of the school educational library media center are to implement, enrich, and support the educational program of the school. The media center shall provide a wide range of materials on all levels of difficulty with diversity of appeal and the representation of different points of view, as well as provide intellectual and physical access to a broad range of literature and informational reading matters for personal pleasure and curriculum support. Media center collections should be based on reader interest, support state academic standards, and aligned curriculum, and the academic needs of students and faculty, and should also provide for the regular removal or discontinuance of books based on condition, circulation, alignment, and content relevancy through the required annual inventory process. To support schools in meeting the library media center objectives, SCPS has a library media procedures manual. This resource provides schools with guidance on collection development and analysis, as well as supporting documents and directions for the library management systems. Prior to school year 2223, collection development and analysis was conducted by various staff members at each school, such as teachers, instructional coaches, and media specialists, who also utilize credible journal articles and vendor recommendations to select materials to meet the curricular needs of the school's unique needs and reader interest. Additionally, during annual inventory, the school library collection was analyzed and materials were weeded from the catalog if they were worn, damaged, or no longer relevant. Last year, Florida implemented several pieces of legislation regarding instructional and library media materials. The new legislation had a direct impact on the work we do in our Seminole County Public School Libraries and Classroom Libraries. The most substantive changes are that all newly purchased or donated materials must be reviewed by a certified media specialist prior to use with students. This was implemented in August of '22. During school year 2223, 17,862 new books were reviewed and selected by a certified media specialist. Public access to instructional materials in each school library collection was also required to be made available in a searchable format online to include textbooks, library books, and elementary classroom libraries. Open access was posted on all school websites K through 12 and our district website in school year 2223. All, and all classroom libraries were reviewed by certified media specialists and cataloged in LibBib, and elementary LibBib public library access was posted on all school websites and on the district websites, which included over 840,000 books. To support the work and provide open access to instructional materials and library materials, SCPS has two management systems. Insignia is our instructional materials and library catalog management. Insignia is our instructional materials and library catalog management system. Items cataloged in Insignia are textbooks, class sets of novels for instruction, instructional kits in school library collections. And then we have LibBib, which is a system used to catalog all teacher classroom library collections and grade level reading materials. Access to Insignia and LibBib classroom libraries are available on our SCPS instructional resources websites. In January of 2023, the Florida Department of Education released a newly developed library media training. All school staff who are involved in the selection of materials are required to take this training annually. The training emphasizes categories for collection development and analysis. The first criteria is that all materials must be reviewed and selected by a Florida certified media specialist who is employed by the district. Be free of material prohibited under statute 847 dot 012. Be appropriate for the grade level and age group. Be suited to student needs and their ability to comprehend the material, and follow state statutes, state Board of Education rules, and district policies. Next is the supports. Materials selected and removed for use in our schools should, recommended, my apology, for use in our schools should support the teaching and learning of the state academic standards and curriculum. It should help meet the academic needs of students and faculty, represent the broad racial, ethnic, socioeconomic, and cultural diversity of the students in Seminole County Public Schools, and appeal to reader interests. Additionally, guidance was provided on library collection maintenance. On August 30th, 2023, the Florida Department of Education posted for the first time a state list of books that have been challenged in Florida districts. School districts should review this list when published annually as part of the library collection analysis. Schools should also continue to remove old books or outdated materials and materials that are not relevant or do not align with current state academic standards. When selecting new materials to replace books that have been weeded from the collection, districts should consider curriculum needs, stakeholder input, providing a balance of fiction and nonfiction, the needs of the readers in high-interest books, input from reputable book vendors, professional and reputable award lists and state compiled book lists, specialized curriculum needs, and the unique needs of the school population. So this leads to where we are now. As I shared last year, per new legislation requirements, we focused on reviewing all newly purchased materials and reviewing and cataloging classroom libraries. We are now in the process of reviewing all SCPS library media collections with a focus on materials that were cataloged prior to school year 2223 and newly added materials to classroom libraries. We are prioritizing analyzing books on the State of Florida School District Reporting List of books that have been discontinued for use in other Florida school districts, as well as published lists of books that may be potentially inappropriate or not useful for school use within Seminole County Public Schools. As required by the Department of Education, we do have a process in place that allows parents and residents to object to materials used with students. Details about the process and forms can be found on our SCPS instructional resources website. This is a quick overview of our objection, of our district process for objections, which starts at the school level, and then would move to a formal principal review and a district level review if required. The first step in the objection process is for the parent of the student to bring the concern to the school. The school may provide an alternative material. If the objection is not resolved, the parent or resident should complete Form 479, which is the objection to instructional materials or other materials. When a parent or resident objects to a non-district adopted material and the objection is not resolved after a discussion with the principal and/or teacher, the parent or resident should submit Forms 479, and the principal will conduct a formal review of the material. After reviewing the material, the principal will make a determination regarding its use in Seminole County Public Schools, which could be the book remains in the collection, the book requires parental consent, or the book is relocated from the collection and its use is discontinued in SCPS or confined to a higher grade level. If a parent or resident objects to a material's use in all Seminole County Public Schools, they should submit Form 479 to the Coordinator of Instructional Projects in the Seminole County Public Schools Instructional Resources Department. If the objection is not resolved to the parent or resident satisfaction, the principal will forward the objection to the deputy superintendent for district review. If the objection is not resolved by the district review to the parent or resident satisfaction, the parent may request the Commissioner of State of Florida Department of Education appoint a special magistrate as outlined in House Bill 1609, sorry, 1069. If it is determined that the material will be retained and parent consent is required, a case as is seen on this slide will be used. The school will replace the book on the bookshelf with a case containing a book jacket for the book that has been designated as requiring parental consent. The book will be stored in a secure location and only checked out by a student once parental consent has been received. If a book is classified as requiring parental guardian consent, the designated school library staff or administrator must contact the student's parent or guardian to receive written consent. Once the library staff or administrator has received consent, the book may be checked out to the student. Schools document that consent was received using the district form provided in the red SCPS library media binder. Books that require parental consent have a note placed in the book summary in Insignia, and a pop-up notice will appear when the book is being checked out to confirm parental consent has been received. Lastly, parents may voluntarily limit their students' access to any library material, media material, or classroom library materials by completing a library media access form and returning it to the student's school. The form and information regarding this process can be found on the SCPS instructional resources website. And I want to thank you for your continued support of our Seminole County Public School Libraries.
Thank you, Dr. Scanlon. Board members, I just wanted to give an update. We've been talking a lot and hearing a lot this week as it relates to materials in our classrooms and our libraries, and wanted you to have the full scope of the work that's been done here to comply with the statute, but also make sure that books are readily available to our students every day. So that is my update. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, it is, we're now ready for board committee updates. Again, Vice Chair Sanchez.
I have some committee reports, but I'm going to hold off until the next meeting since this one's going to be longer with comments. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Thank you.
Member Panic?
I had no committee meetings, so I have no updates.
Thank you. Member Davis. Thank you. Member Garrick?
I did have an opportunity to meet with the Business Advisory Board. It was not a formal meeting because we did not reach quorum, but I did want to say we had a robust conversation about all of the good things happening in SCPS and how our business partners can support the work that we're doing. I also wanted to make sure that we said a special thank you to the foundation and the Tools for Teaching experience that, that Member Davis, Chair Kraus, and I got to participate in. If you are not familiar with Tools for Teaching, it is a resource store that provides resources, school supplies, for our teachers to distribute, and it also has a tremendous amount of books available for teachers, especially new teachers, to build their classroom libraries. And finally, I wanted to say that we had the opportunity, Member Davis, Chair Kraus, and myself, also to go to the Sharing Center, which is a phenomenal resource, a community resource, to help support folks in need, both individuals and families, everything from showers to clothing to haircuts. So one more of our vital partnerships within our community. You may have heard that we have, we have had an ongoing issue with homeless students, and this year already, I believe, we've had over 1,000 identified. So if you'd like to know about the work that they do in any way that you all can support our students, I invite you to, to check that out. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I'll be very brief. We attended, the superintendent and I attended mayor's and manager's today. Each of the commissions gave an update. They've all passed budgets without raising taxes, so that's good for Seminole County. Superintendent and I visited Jackson Heights, and it was fun to award the students and teachers recognition. And I also was invited by Supervisor Elections to help register voters at Hegarty High School. They pre-register and register voters, and we were successful in registering 252 new voters. So excited to do that, and all of the board members will get the opportunity to do that, to do that soon. It is now time for public comment, and we have quite a few, including some people that are standing outside. So again, please thumbs up, thumbs down. The green signs, red signs are good. If I call your name, I'd ask that you line up next to the wall. The first speaker, Katrina Voorhees, followed by Rowan Fox, and on deck Franklin Perez.
If I could just make a quick comment, I just want to thank you all for being here. That's why we passed out the tokens, just to let you know that we appreciate every person that comes in here and gives us information or shares something for our consideration, but most importantly, that you're involved in the education of your children, or someone else's children, and you're interested in it. So we do appreciate that, and we appreciate you, the comments, and they were given on behalf of the board. We just wanted you to know and have something to show that we do care about you. The other thing that I just wanted to quickly mention is that when we had the public comments for the agenda items, you were all so respectful, and it really, you know, it really reached my heart that we were all going to respect what other people had to say, whether we disagree or not, and we really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Voorhees?
Hi, my name is Katrina. If you aren't aware, Instagram is a social media platform that is popular among young people, especially the younger generation. 141 million of the Instagram users are between the ages of 13 and 17 years old. I found this public post. I also had, it also had several photos along with it that showed this woman's swollen and beaten body. Her post started off with trigger warning in all capitals. It's been in my heart for several years to share my story. I've been afraid. I've lived a sheltered life. It was incredibly, I was incredibly naive to the true intentions of those people around me with a soft heart, sensitive soul, and a let-me-fix-you kind of charisma about me. I was a narcissist jackpot. I was 17 years old when I met my first boyfriend. He knew just how to control me. He didn't, it didn't take long for him to tear me down. The emotional and verbal abuse began. I took it that he cared for me deeply when he told me what clothes to wear, who I should hang out with. It started out subtle. I had never been in a relationship before. What did I know? He said he loved me, so I believed him. Psychological abuse escalated to roughing me up a little bit by grabbing my arms and pulling me here or there, or grabbing my throat, but not necessarily choking me yet. Fairly early in our relationship, he pinned me down into a fire ant pile, and hence the bites on my back in the first photo that you would see. One, one time, he beat my legs with a curtain rod that you can see in the second and third It was always bad because when I would fight back. Then one day, things crossed the line, and we got into an argument over his infidelity. He shoved me down four concrete steps, and then I had whiplash. I couldn't breathe, and I started to cry, and he sobbed. I'm sorry, I backed out, I'm sorry, I forgot about the baby. I was eight weeks pregnant with this child, and I miscarried. If only that 17-year-old child had an opportunity to read the book Dime. Dime is a book about a girl her, that age, if not younger, meeting a guy and getting, and, and falling for him. He was charming, and long story short-
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Building her trust.
Ma'am, thank you. Your time has expired.
Thank you. Rowan Fox, followed by Franklin Perez, followed by Gary Carney.
I'll make this, I'll make this really quick. People fear things that are different and people who are different. Fear says, if they can't read about it, they can't learn it. If they don't know about it, then it can't happen to them. We know that's not true. For the sake of the children, please don't give in to fear. Equality hurts no one.
Thank you. Franklin Perez, followed by Gary Carney, followed by Nancy Ringear. Good evening.
Hi, my, hi, my name is Franklin Perez, and I've been a resident of Seminole County since September of 1998. Some bad actors here are, are, are here to disrupt the meeting with requests to ban books from public school classrooms, reading lists, and media centers. All our public school students deserve to read a wide variety of books. Public school educators should not be bullied by a group of irrational individuals that wish to censor differences in ideas that can be read by public school students. I urge you to continue to trust our public school teachers and media specialists to choose books for public school students. Seminole County Public Schools is a premier school district and has been for decades. Let's not tarnish that reputation and high standing by allowing for the intimidation of public school educators into removing books from our public schools. There are already books in our Seminole County Public Schools that require parental consent. No more book bans in our public schools. If these irrational individuals wish to not have their children exposed to a variety of books with different ideas, then I suggest they avail themselves of Florida's private school voucher system from kindergarten to 12th grade that allows any parent to send their children to any private school of their choice, whose libraries and classrooms do not have the material and books they object to, and leave the public schools alone to offer those variety of books and ideas. I would also suggest for parents that wish to have their children taught school subjects and books like critical race theory and other material that are not available in our public schools due to these irrational individuals choosing censorship over openness of ideas to choose private schools that teach such material by availing themselves also of Florida's private school voucher system within a free market of private schools. No more book bans in our public schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carney, followed by Nancy, I'm messing up your last name, my apologies, Ringear, followed by Maria Oliverz. Good evening.
Thank you. My name is Gary Carney. I'm, I don't have much to say, other than I had the opportunity to talk to a couple of moms before we came in here, and, you know, we're expecting you to cause some controversy here. And I know that you're here because you have children, and you care for your children, and, and you're people, and we need to hear from you. But I'm reminded when my daughter was young and 90210 first hit television, and how scared my wife and I were to watch 90210 and to allow my daughter to watch it. But let me tell you, moms, that are here to ban books and ban education and ban learning and promote ignorance, it's wrong. It's wrong. Watching it, reading it, being exposed to it will help you learn what's true. It will give you an opportunity to talk to your children about what's real. This all starts at the top. This discussion starts with our governor who promotes hate and not his state, and that's disgusting. We need to stop it. We need-
Can you crouch?
I didn't hear you, and I don't hear-
Order, please.
We, we need to build colleges, not destroy new colleges.
I'm supposed to address the board.
Order, please.
Forgive me. I'll address the board. We need to promote arts, sciences, education, reading, learning, not ignorance. This, this business of Florida where woke goes to die, this is stupid. The opposite of woke is ignorance, and that's what our governor's been promoting.
Order.
And we need to stop it. We need to teach the truth.
Order, please.
We need to teach the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Thank you, sir. Your time has expired.
We need to teach the African-American truth.
Sir, thank you. Your time has expired.
We need to teach the Mexican truth. Forgive me.
Thank you.
We need to teach the whole truth.
Nancy Ringear, Maria Oliverz, and Jacqueline Clement. Thank you. Good evening.
I'll correct you.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Nancy Skinner-Ringear. I am retired from Seminole County Schools, and I am proud that this district has such a fine reputation, staffed with competent professionals. I am here to object to any book being banned when just one parent or a group that the Southern Poverty Law Center has named a hate group demands a book be removed from classrooms or libraries. There are books that are inappropriate for children. There are books that are inappropriate for children. Professionals should make the decisions about which books should be used in classrooms or available in school libraries. If a parent does not want their child to read certain books, have them tell their children not to read them. There's a process for that. However, that same parent does not have the right to tell my child what they can or cannot read. There are individuals who are not here to give legitimate input about books. I support the professionals of Seminole County to make the, who make the final judgment about these books. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight about this important issue.
Thank you for being here. Maria Oliver Verro, followed by Jacqueline Clement, followed by J.J. Holmes. Hi, good evening.
Hi, my name is Maria Olivero. I'm here because I'm concerned about the books the Moms for Liberty and their affiliates want to ban from the schools. Considering Moms for Liberty are motivated by their religious values, I am hesitant to trust their judgment on the books they want to ban. However, I do trust the school administration and their auditing process. I am a parent of children of the Seminole County school system, and I do not believe in banning books in the manner of just reading passages without context. I understand that under the bill HB 1069, they have the right to challenge books in this manner, and I am not here to silence them. I am here to say that they do not speak for my family. If they were concerned about their parental rights, they can fill out a library access form online to limit the library use for their children. But no, they want to come to the school board and impose their views through shock value. I want my kids to have the right to explore their curiosity. Having a wide variety of media through the school is a great option to do though. I trust our teachers to teach our children about the importance of respecting different points of views. This will teach them to be tolerant and open-minded. As the days progress, we are seeing increasingly polarizing points of views. Banning books through school systems will divide us further. Let's understand each other's stories. I'm not saying to agree, but I don't have to agree with you to help you. And you, no one, with that conversation, we can focus on what matters for all of us. Here are a few things. Invest in modern facilities and technology to help kids succeed. Prioritize mental health to support students and faculty. When Seminole County provided free school lunches during and post-COVID, that was really helpful for every family. Let's continue to fund more resources like that. Thank you to our, our school district leadership, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much. Jacqueline Clement, followed by J.J. Holmes, followed by Wayne Dichter. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. I'm Jacqueline Clement, and I'm going to read a passage from a book that is available in the Seminole County schools. "The man didn't bother with any feeling good, but just opened my legs, and I was surprised. It was like watching it happen on TV to someone else. When he turned me around and pulled my bottom to him and did the next thing, it hurt so badly that I wanted to scream. But when he finally stopped that and turned me around again and pushed me to my knees, making me open my mouth, I choked on him, and then I think I suffocated. And when I came back to life, I was showing money to LA, who was yelling at me because it wasn't enough, and there hadn't been any tunnel or light or angel singing, but I knew I had died. On the street, sometimes I had to work with Brandy, busy not three feet away. I even had to do three ways sometimes with her. It was embarrassing. Brandy acted like she didn't care, but she didn't like it either when we had to do it like that. Even for peeing, Lollipop had to squat over a bowl in her room in front of the camera. She was supposed to empty and wash it herself the next morning. When Brandy's hear that, she clicked her tongue with disgust. 'Perverts want to see you pee,' she asked. Lollipop shrugged. 'I don't know,' she said. 'I just go when I have to go.' At first, she thought all girls at home in their rooms played naked with their uncles in front of a computer camera. When Ray began to tell her this was not the way it was and that she was special, living a special life, she believed it. She felt special. When Lollipop told me that part, she didn't realize what she was saying. She just puffed her little body and smirked like she was some sort of celebrity. When Ray began asking her to do-
Thank you, your time has expired.
J.J. Holmes, followed by Wayne Dichter, followed by Emily Belairs Romero.
Superintendent Beeman, Chair Kraus, Vice Chair Sanchez, members of the school board. My name is J.J. Holmes, and I'm a proud graduate of Lyman High School. Go Grehams! I'm here tonight to say how much I appreciate the students staffing their families in SCPS, hanging in there and riding out the storm for these last few crazy years. Storms are destructive and wreak havoc on residents. Storms don't care what's in their path, and storms disproportionately strike vulnerable communities. The storm's only goal is to destroy everything in its path, and storms don't care what damage they do and what chaos they leave in their wake. But we also know storms don't last forever, and once they've passed, we rebuild, bigger, stronger, better than before. We were doing fine before the bigots showed up, and will be fine after they're gone.
Order, please.
We don't need to ban books in Seminole County. We need to ban it to government extremist hate groups. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, J.J. Wayne Dichter, followed by Emily Belairs Romero, followed by Aranda Davidson.
Thank you for allowing me this opportunity. And now for something completely different. All too often, meetings here are filled with interlopers from outside of Seminole County. Seminole citizens pay taxes here in this county for a number of goods and services. We pay taxes that pay your salaries, and we are grateful for your employment and for what you do for this county, the schools, the children, the families. Therefore, I'm asking you to exclude contributors of information or comment from outside of Seminole County based on the following. The public forum doctrine, some government spaces such as school board meetings may be considered limited public forums or designated public forums. In such forums, restrictions on speech may be subject to stricter scrutiny. But any limitations on who can speak must be reasonable and related to the purpose of the forum. The purpose is what we do here in Seminole County, what you do for us in Seminole County, and how we participate as citizens. The designated public forum is of, in Florida, is a government-owned or controlled space that's not traditionally open for public expression, but has been intentionally opened by the government for that purpose. We do that once a month. In a designated public forum, the government can impose reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions on speech, but these restrictions must be content-neutral and serve a significant government purpose. Your functioning as a board is important, and it needs to be uninterrupted, and we don't need to have people from Orange County or Brevard County, and I love those counties, but we don't need their input in telling our county what to do and the people that we've elected to these positions. The doctrine of reasonableness is a legal concept that is often associated with administrative law and constitutional law. It pertains to the idea that government actions, decisions, or regulations should be reasonable in their scope, purpose, and implementation. This doctrine is used to assess the legality and validity of administrative decisions made by government agencies like you. Substantive reason-
Thank you, your time has expired, sir.
You can leave the remainder of your comments with the clerk, and she can share with us for the record if you'd like.
I gave her a copy for you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Emily Belairs Romero, Aranda Davidson, and Rachel Bitner. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Board and Superintendent. My name is Emily Belairs Romero. I am the parent of a student who attends school in our county. I am also a Seminole County voter and taxpayer. For members, I am here today because of a dangerous government overreach. I am here because the Republican supermajority in Tallahassee passed an authoritarian law to give the Moms for Liberty a fast and simple way to ban books that do not align with the type of Christo fascist government they wish to enforce upon all Floridians. This is not normal. This board should be aware and alarmed by the fact that the Republicans in Tallahassee legalized massive book banning in our public schools and are relying on the group that is here today to accomplish their goal. Book banning is one of the oldest tricks used by fascist dictators. I know of two other groups that ban books to accomplish their goals: Spanish Inquisitors and Nazis. China, Cuba, Venezuela, Iran, and Russia are just some of the countries that are using book banning techniques to advance their authoritarian agenda. Who else supports book banning? The Taliban, Boko Haram, ISIS, Al Qaeda, and our Seminole County State Representatives, Rachel Plaken, David Smith, Susan Placencia, Senator Jason Breder, and Governor Ron DeSantis. Only the bad guys in history have banned books-
Order, please.
...to subdue those who did not look like them, think like them, or worship like them. Board members, we need to stop this madness by voting for leaders who believe in democracy, personal freedoms, and are not blinded by raw power. If we don't, our children will pay the consequences for generations to come. Thank you for your attention and your excellent service.
Thank you very much. Aranda Davidson, Rachel Bitner, and JoJo Griffin.
Hi, my name's Aranda Davidson. Please remove any children from the room due to the graphic content I'm about to read. This book is available at my son's SCPS middle school, accessible to children as young as 11 years old. She couldn't stop it, the image that blazed over her senses. Hunt putting those big hands on his waist, hoisting her onto the counter, pressing, currently pressing into her spine, shoving her T-shirt over her midriff, his T-shirt actually, and spreading her legs, fucking her with her tongue in his cock until he was sobbing in pleasure, screaming it. She didn't, she didn't care, just so long as he was touching her and inside of her. She said, "I recall you promising to fuck me till I couldn't remember my own name." He shifted his hips, grinding his cock into her, searing her even when the clothing still between them. "If that was what you want, sweetheart, that's what I'll give you." Oh God. She couldn't even get a solid breath down, couldn't even think about, couldn't think around his mouth on her neck and hands, and that massive beautiful cock digging into her. She had to get him inside of her, right now.
Order.
She needed him. She needed to have this heat and strength around her. We have laws in tact to protect our children. My 11-year-old should not be able to get a hold of a book like this, and I, I don't care what anybody's views are, my 11-year-old should not be reading pornography like this. This is insane.
Order, please, order.
Thank you.
Rachel Bitner, JoJo Griffin, and Jim O'Brien.
Rachel Bitner, Seminole County. Move it up. Is that better? Okay. Banning books is bad because our children need to have a wider worldview. I'd love to hear how children benefit from this worldview. Here's an excerpt from a book that's in the Seminole County School Library. "All I want before is Daddy, get the fuck off me, but now I think about you, that you, that fucking cute boy. My clit swell up, think Daddy. Daddy sick me, disgust me, but still he sex me up. I nauseous in my stomach, but hot tight in my twat, and I think I want it back. The smell of the bedroom, the hurt, he slap my face till it sting, and my ears sing separate songs from each other. Call me names, pump my pussy, in and out, in and out. Ah, I come. He bite me hard, a hump-hump, he slam his hips into me hard. I scream pain, he come, he slap my thighs like cowboys do horses on TV. Shiver, orgasm in me, his body shaking, grab me, call me fat mama, big whore. You love it, say you love it. I wanna say I don't, I wanna say I'm chilly. But my pissy, my pussy popping like grease in fire in pan, he slam into me again, his dick soft, he start sucking my titty. Then my buddy take me over again, little shocks after earthquake, shiver me. I come again." I don't want to read anymore, actually. I'm wondering where the green papers, like, you got, they don't want to ban this, you want to ban this book? You don't want to ban this book? I'm horrified, horrified. This is one of the reasons my children aren't in the school system, because this is in the school system.
Thank you, your time has expired. Order, please. Order.
JoJo Griffin, followed by Jim O'Brien, followed by Lynn Moira Dichter. Good evening.
Hi, how are y'all doing? My name is JoJo. Some words about liberty. Liberty means each of us control what we read, what we think, what is viewed as art, and what we listen to. All of those things make up our education, help us develop empathy, and form our character. Banning books is not liberty, it is control. I'll conclude with a quote from the author of Eleanor &amp; Park, Rainbow Rao, in response to the Parents Action League who are attempting to ban it. "When these people call this book an obscene story, I feel like they're saying that rising above your situation isn't possible, that if you grow up in an ugly situation, your story isn't fit for good people's ears. The ugly things cancel out everything beautiful." Thank you.
Thank you. Jim O'Brien, followed by Lynn Moira Dichter, followed by Janine Omnand. Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Jim O'Brien, and my daughters went to school here in Seminole County, starting at Sterling Park Elementary. They're now 50 years old and 48 years old, and I'm ancient. They graduated from Lake Hall High School. So about banning books, I don't really think, this is about banning books. I have an excerpt here from a book which is totally pornographic. It's in the media center. It's not about banning books. I think it's about the teachers and the administrators being responsible in selecting books for minors. Most of the kids in the school here are minors, right? So I think it's, it's really about that. When you put together a curriculum for, for the students, you use judgment about what's in the curriculum. It's the same thing with the books that go in the media center. I don't think that, I could read part of this, but I think it's just repetitive, it's totally disgusting material, and it should not be in media centers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Lynn Moira Dichter, Janine Omnand, and then Karen Nolan, please. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Moira Dichter, 40-year resident of Seminole County and parent of two graduates of Seminole County Public Schools. I trust and respect teachers. I trust and respect reading and curriculum specialists, librarians, and principals. I trust and respect Superintendent Beeman and this school board to create and implement policies and education for Seminole County students. The book banners here tonight are, as expected, loud, but not representative of the families of Seminole County. My message of support tonight is to remind you, the residents of our county sent a clear message 10 months ago that Seminole County is not extreme. In 1942, a 13-year-old Jewish girl and her family fled their home in Amsterdam and went into hiding, hidden in a secret annex of an old office building facing hunger and the ever-present threat of discovery, deportation, and death. This is the diary of Anne Frank, a book impactful for me and for my family. This book is a world classic, as are many of the other books that these book banners want you to discard. The commonalities are obvious when you scan the list that these book banners have sent to at least one of you. They are anti-black, anti-gay, anti-Jewish, anti-American history, and world history. The list assembled by amateurs, and I dare say racists, does not have Seminole County students in mind. That is your job, to ensure students here in Seminole get the best, most wide-ranging education that we can provide. Expose- Exposing our students to books across all genres produces graduates and ultimately citizens who see the world and see each other as having value. The majority of Seminole County families and teachers are putting our trust in you to safeguard us from the narrow-minded and those with limited vision. Please prioritize our students and their education, even when it's not easy, even when the noise is loud. Thank you.
Thank you. Janie Omnand, Karen Nolan, Anthony Pellon. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jeanne Omnand.
I'm sorry, I...
It's quite all right. You came very close. And thank you to the school board for allowing me this time for a public comment. So, I am a Mom for Liberty. I am not part of the Moms for Liberty, but I am a member of this entire roomful of people who are Mothers for Liberty, Fathers for Liberty, and basically Citizens and Residents for Liberty. I have lived here for decades. I raised my family here. I want to address what a couple of the speakers presented to you, excerpts from books, that we don't know the titles of those books, we don't know the context of those books, and to point out that while what may sound like pornography to some could be a lifeline to others. Those books, for all I know, were describing rape, child sex trafficking, horrible, horrible child abuse. And to a child who is experiencing that, finding one of those books and seeing themselves there and knowing they are not alone and having the validation to maybe find courage, go talk to an adult, go to the school principal, go to the school counselor, go to a school teacher. Nobody is advocating pornography in our public school information, but everyone should know that trying to limit children's critical thinking as they grow might work for the period of time that they're growing, and they're going to become adults, and we want them to be critical thinkers. I want to wind up here because I'm sure my time is running out and say that I am so gratified to see democratic governance taking place here in Seminole County. This is an oasis in a...
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Nolan, followed by Anthony Pellon, followed by Sherri Slasher. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Karen Nolan, and I'm a lifelong, 40-year resident of Seminole County. As the school year gets underway and into full swing, may I begin with the end in mind? And I'd just say thank you to Superintendent Beeman and the entire school board. Thank you for keeping the focus on the needs of all of our students. Thank you for having policies and procedures in place for years that remedy any concerns, and that is the commitment that maintains our excellence. Thank you for all the hard-working, courageous teachers, staff, school, and district administrators who occupy every academic building, arena, bus, cafeteria, clinic, and classroom in this district, who persevere under constant pressure and scrutiny. Thank you for the parents and good citizens of Seminole County for seeking and supporting the very integral partnerships necessary to arm our students with the most powerful weapon on earth, and that is a solid, viable education. Why? Because in the decades to come, Americans face yet another challenge, how to keep our democracy and our society from being divided, not only between rich and poor, but also between those who have access to information and knowledge, and thus to power, and those who do not. The power of enlightenment, the power of self-improvement and self-assertion, the power to achieve upward mobility, the power over your own lives and families to thrive and succeed. Such a divide will have consequences of the future of America. Those who enrich themselves by learning to read with understanding and write with skill and clarity do so for themselves and their families and our nation as well. They learn in order to preserve and enhance the record of humanity, to be productive members of a larger community, to be good citizens and good ancestors to those who will follow. Today, we have students with those same aspirations and dreams. In this age, when individual and national security sinks or swims on the ability to mine and manage information, we cannot afford to have this generation fall in the curve. I submit to you that we are more like than we are different, that we share the shame outcomes.
Thank you so much. Anthony Pellon, followed by Sherri Slasher, followed by Fred Schott. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Tony Pellon. My father fought in World War II, standing against a government that orchestrated book-burning campaigns to obliterate ideas they found threatening. Initially, they targeted works by Jewish authors, socialists, and liberals, but the scope of their censorship quickly expanded to include other works, including those by Albert Einstein, Helen Keller, and indeed, any other literature that clashed with their terrible ideology. In today's world, book burners have evolved. No longer relying on gasoline and bonfires, they orchestrate organized campaigns propelled by hollow slogans such as "anti-woke" and "grooming" in their quest to suppress teachings they perceive as subversive. As a humanist, I firmly believe in every parent's right to shield their children from materials they deem inappropriate, but there are already established procedures in place for parents to limit their children's exposure to specific content. But for today's book burners, that is not enough. They will not rest until they have eradicated access to knowledge for all our children. James Madison, our fourth president, and the man often hailed as the father of our Constitution, wrote that "The advancement and diffusion of knowledge is the only guardian of true liberty." And in 1905, the U.S. Supreme Court ruled that one person's liberty cannot deprive his neighbors of their own liberty. It is often said, "Your liberty to swing your fist ends where my nose begins." So, this is where our collective noses begin. I am here today, and humanists are here today, because we love our children, we cherish our schools, and we are devoted to our country, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sherri Slasher, followed by Fred Schott, followed by Sandra Gonzalez. Sherri Slasher? Okay, I'll put her at the end. Mr. Schott, you're up next, followed by Sandra Gonzalez, followed by Matthew Caldwell. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Fred Schott. My goal is always to educate by getting people to think about tough issues. So, I'm here to defend a specific writing, one we all know. Before I get to the writing, there are a lot of members of Moms for Liberty who care deeply about their kids, and there are a lot of people on the progressive side who also care deeply about their kids. But this isn't about what kids should read. No, the stated goal of the Heritage Foundation, which is training and funding the leaders of Moms for Liberty, the goal for 40 years has been to eliminate public education. It's in their platform. So, the goal of the people sending marching orders to the people here is not to ban books, but to create so much chaos and so much demonizing of teachers and schools to destroy the entire public school system so only a select few can get an elite education. Look, I wholeheartedly agree that books with F-this and F-that should not be at a minimum in elementary school. But if you're driving around with Let's Go Brandon and F-Biden or F-Trump on your car for all those little eyes to see, then don't try to argue you're concerned about corrupting children. Now...
Order, please.
The writing I'm here to defend tonight is the rulebook for everyone here, men, women, right or left, and that is the United States Constitution. I have taught the Constitution in elementary school, middle school, high school, college, postgraduate, private, and public. But now the legislature has passed a law that states that concepts constituting unlawful discrimination include that members of one race are superior to members of another race. It is unlawful to reference a written doctrine that includes that members of one race are superior to members of another race. The problem is that our country was founded in part on that doctrine, and it is written right into our Constitution in Article 1, Section 2, which says blacks are not only inferior, they are worth three-fifths of a white person. So, this absurdity of anti-woke-ness...
Your time has expired, sir.
I'm sorry.
Makes it illegal to teach sections of the Constitution.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Gonzalez, followed by Matthew Caldwell, followed by C. Day Smith. Good evening.
Hello, I'm Sandra Gonzalez. I, okay, I have been a resident of Seminole County for over 35 years and had four children that have gone through and to Seminole County schools. I don't understand why words like ass, bitch, cock, fuck, I won't say this next one, ooh, they're bad, now I'll say it, nigger, piss, shit. There's 342 of these words in this book. I don't understand why any child should have to even be exposed to read this, or it should be accessible, not even under the one where the parental control or parental permission should be given to them. Yes, I do believe in our Constitution, and as an adult, we can make our own decisions. But just like a child who's seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 years old cannot drive a vehicle, so they cannot make those decisions, why should a child be exposed to pornography at their school? If a parent believes that pornography is necessary for their child's development, they have the freedom to buy those books themselves, not be bought by our taxpayer money. They do not help their education, their critical thinking, or their, any kind of their educational development. What I have to say.
Thank you. Matthew Caldwell, followed by C. Day Smith, followed by Rhonda Zasta. Good evening.
Thank you, board members. My name is Matt Caldwell. I am a Seminole County resident. I'm a father, a grandfather, and a 12-year veteran of the U.S. Navy. I'm up here to discuss the inappropriate language in some of these books and the context in which they are written. Being in the Navy for 12 years, I'm immune, basically, to any bad words. I've heard it all. But there is a proper place for books like this, and it's not in the public school system. Just as it's illegal for me to carry a handgun into a public school, whereas I'm welcome to do that at a gun range, it's also inappropriate and illegal for me to bring pornography into a public school. If I want that, I can go to an adult book store and get that book for myself, my children, if that's what I want them to read. I do appreciate that the Seminole County Public Schools has a process in place. What I ask from the board members is make sure that process is being followed through on. If a parent brings a title up to the principal and the principal does not address it to the needs of that parent, I would like the, the board members to investigate why that has happened, and that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. C. Day Smith, followed by Rhonda Zasta, followed by David Wile White. Good evening.
Howdy.
Order, please.
I'm C. Day Smith. I'm here with Women's Voices of Southwest Florida, and I have four kids in public school here in Florida. Why are we here today? Well, I can tell you one thing. It's not because of books, because throughout history, it has never been about books. Back in 1524, the New Testament was first translated into English, and in response, the Roman Catholic Church had all the copies banned, burned, because church authorities wanted the Bible to only be in Latin so they could control the messaging. From 1730 to 1834, the Southern United States passed anti-literacy laws to keep people of color from learning to read or write so that they wouldn't have to fear a slave rebellion. Attempts to censor media that the public has access to has been ongoing throughout history, and one thing has always remained the same, that it was never about the books. It was always about controlling a narrative and imposing a worldview. In short, it's about power. It's never been about parental rights. A 2022 poll found that over 70% of parents oppose book banning, and of course they do, because it, book bans hurt children. They stifle a student's expression, they remove the confidence that they achieve in representation, and it prevents the fundamental development that is gained from exposure to new ideas and viewpoints. But what's worse is that the bans keep teachers focused on pleasing a small and very loud group of angry parents instead of focusing on teaching students. Last year, then, fewer than half of Florida's 10th graders passed their state English exam. This isn't about books, and it sure as hell isn't about protecting kids. It's a talking point, it's a political stunt, and it is a culture war in which our children are cannon fodder. Moms for Liberty is a hate group. Thank you.
Thank you. Rhonda Zasta, David Wile, and Robin Dellinger. David Wile, Robin Dellinger, and Deborah Kraus, please. Good evening.
Good evening. You meant David White, right? I just...
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, just making sure.
Looking glass place? Yes, looking glass place? I have the right one? Okay.
I apologize. I'm not here to talk about book bans this evening. I have another thing to discuss. My son Hayden is in kindergarten for the second year in a row at Wicklow Elementary. Hayden suffers from many medical conditions that he not only receives routine treatments and medications for, but also has conditions that could present an emergent, life-threatening medical crisis at a moment's notice. I personally have went to multiple fire stations in the Sanford and Lake Mary area, attempting to cover any station that may care for Hayden in an emergency to keep them aware of Hayden's complex medical conditions. Many have labeled me as a fierce advocate for my child. Hayden has been transported to the hospital via ambulance for life-threatening conditions countless, more than 150 times in his lifetime, most recently this past weekend. Due to his many medical conditions, multiple doctors that care for Hayden have written to the school district, and I quote, "To ensure his safety at school, he requires medical staff at all times that can administer medications and can provide assistance in an emergent medical situation. If no medical staff or nurses are available at the school at all times, then he needs one-on-one care to assist him." However, school district staff, none of which are doctors, just today declined to state that they would only, that only a nurse can give Hayden necessary lifesaving medications, and wants unlicensed, trained staff at the school to administer medications, therefore per Hayden's physicians, leaves him in unsafe condition for him to attend school. Hayden will soon have an additional surgery on his hips, taking him away from school once again. He just recently had a surgery on his, on his spine during the summer. The school district should not have the right to question multiple medical professionals in their care for my child, and I fully anticipate taking this further should it be necessary. I have asked for a call from the superintendent directly for nearly a year and have yet to hear from her. Shame on the school district for not responding to a concerned parent about the care of their child.
Thank you. Robin Dellinger, followed by Deborah Kraus, followed by Kim Finnegan.
Good evening, board, board members.
Good evening.
And Superintendent Beeman. My name's Robin Dellinger, and I'm speaking for the League of Women Voters of Seminole County. The Florida Constitution states, "The education of children is a fundamental value of the people of the state of Florida," and Florida statutes require the opportunity for students to obtain a high-quality education. The League of Women Voters values greatly the professionalism and expertise of our teachers and our school and district leaders, and supports them in providing a high-quality education for all students. The right of parents to supervise and monitor their children's education has always been, always, a critical part of the collaboration between parents and schools regardless of any narrative suggesting otherwise. The League believes that no one individual should make decisions about what another person, including students, should read. Parents who do not want their children to have access to a particular book through their school or classroom library can opt out of that access. However, every parent should have the same freedom to choose the books their children will read based on what they believe is appropriate for their children. The League does not believe that every book, regardless of content, should be available to children. Material that is not appropriate for K-12 students should be carefully evaluated through a process like that outlined by Dr. Scandlin tonight. The process for a parent or resident to challenge materials or books is outlined in policy as required by statute. School districts should closely follow their board-approved policy and not defer to the demands of any one individual or group outside of the policy. Classrooms should be safe places where, with guidance from their teachers, students engage in conversations that require critical thinking. If age-appropriate books that would expose students to challenging topics are prohibited, students miss opportunities to understand other perspectives and to think deeply about ideas that have relevance to their lives. Seminole County Public Schools is known nationally for the achievement of its students. The League of Women Voters support the school board.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Deborah Kraus, followed by Kim Finnegan, followed by Fiona Shannon. Good evening. Good evening.
All right, Deborah Kraus, again, Altamont Springs. I apologize I'm not here about the books. I do have a seventeen-year-old who graduated from Seminole County. I have a sixteen-year-old and a fourteen-year-old who are currently in Seminole County Public Schools. Throughout my time with them, I have dabbled with private schools, charter schools, homeschooling, and public schools. And as you guys know, I've been coming for at least the last year. I've presented you guys with materials, and I've presented you with what I believe are violations of certain statutes and rules. And I know that each of you as board members truly, truly cares, and I know each of you as board members have issues, and you guys have been working diligently at trying to get the discipline straightened out in our schools, been trying to work through all of the issues with Skyward and everything else. But the truth of the matter is, is the administration keeps everything from going forward. It prevents you from doing anything, and I truly believe that you have your best interests in heart, but things need to be done and things need to be accomplished. We need to make sure each child is getting the proper credit for the classes that they're taking. We need to make sure GPAs are being calculated correctly. We need to make sure that every school has the same program. You guys couldn't even ensure that Skyward is the same in every single high school. They said that there were credit discrepancies in every single school. So, again, whether or not I believe that you guys are violating certain statutes or certain rules, that is between us, but I don't think that anything has been fixed, and I still, I'm just here to let you know I'm not gonna let it go.
Thank you. Kim Finnegan, followed by Fiona Shannon, followed by Allison Holmes. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Kim Finnegan. I'm thankful that you guys are giving me the opportunity to speak. There's an old saying about throwing the baby out with the bathwater. It is meant to warn against making an avoidable mistake in which something good or of value is eliminated when trying to get rid of something unwanted. Removing books because of a few passages that are objectionable to some is just that kind of mistake. A book is far more than isolated passage or two. It's an interweaving of characters, settings, language, and voice, of ideas and images and dreams all brought to life with words. It's about seeing yourself in a character, or seeing how you react to a character. It's about seeing yourself, period. Young adult author Jason Reynolds has said, "Ultimately, if we don't see ourselves in books, it's like someone saying you don't exist, period. Your life doesn't matter. Your story doesn't matter." Is this the message this board wishes to send to the students of SCPS? To our students struggling with mental illness, and those struggling with family issues, and those with thoughts of self-harm? To our LGBTQ students, and our students of color, and our students with disabilities? Books can be a safe haven to children and young adults as they navigate growing up in this world, and parents should have a say in what their children are reading. But they should not have a say in what my child is reading, nor in what their neighbor's kids are reading. Teach your children your values, and I'll teach my children mine. That is my right as a parent. By removing these books based on certain isolated passages that you've already heard from tonight, with no titles, the board will also be removing the opportunity for a student to get lost within another world where they can learn so much about their past, their present, and their future. A world where they may see themselves and realize that they are not alone. So please, do not bow to scare tactics and shock value. Let our children read. Thank you.
Thank you. Fiona Shannon, followed by Allison Holmes, followed by Lola Smith. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Superintendent Beeman and school board members. Once again, I get up here to thank you for continuing to do your job, one that is getting considerably more difficult because of a handful of disruptors. I have been attending these meetings regularly since twenty-eighteen, after the tragic school shooting at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School. I have watched these meetings go from civil to downright ugly because of that handful of people bound and determined to destroy public education. As long as we have to listen to their insanity, our children suffer, our teachers suffer, and Florida education suffers. Their current attack is on books. They want to ban books for all children based on their own religious and bigoted beliefs. Let's leave this to the experts, to the teachers and educators who know far more than this group of closed-minded individuals. We all have the right to censor what our own children read, but not to censor what others read. Once again, I reiterate the separation of church and state. There are private schools and homeschooling for those who want a religious education. One of the books this group wants banned is The Bluest Eye by Toni Morrison. I suggest they take the time to read this book. I can truly say this book opened my eyes and was one of the most impactful books I have ever read. Reading leads to critical thinking and conversations, but it seems this group is against both. I ask the board to continue to do what's right for our students. All students and our teachers do not cater to this group that has been labeled a hate group by the Southern Poverty Law Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison Holmes, followed by Lola Smith, followed by Jamie Smith. Journey Smith, maybe. I'm sorry if I messed up your name. Good evening.
Good evening. Allison Holmes, real SCPS parent and real Seminole County resident. Apparently, the joyful, anti-government extremist homeschooling warriors now want SCPS to take away decision-making authority from our intelligent, dedicated, experienced, highly-qualified staff and hand the reins over to them. That would be fun, right? A hate group whose beliefs don't align with ours wants to decide what literature is available in our school district. Our books have already been reviewed by a certified media specialist, but as usual, our joyful, anti-government extremist homeschooling warriors think with zero experience, they can do it better. This is despite our joyful, anti-government extremist homeschooling warriors believing wives should submit to their husbands. They believe our kids should walk in purity before marriage, and they claim fornication, adultery, and homosexuality are all unbiblical, a sin, and sexually perverted. Although apparently there are some special exemptions for adultery. For example, it isn't unbiblical, or a sin, or a sexual perversion if you cheat on your wife with a porn star, even if your wife's just given birth to your child.
Order.
You know, last week in Seminole County, we had Nazis waving swastika flags at Crane's Roost, but all the joyful, anti-government extremist homeschooling warriors care about is ridding our schools of rainbows. These meetings are supposed to be about our school district, not a forum for radical religious extremists. And as we don't go into their church to dictate what they should and shouldn't be exposed to, how about they give us the same courtesy and stay out of our school district? Keep hate and bigotry out of SCPS.
Order, please. Okay. Let's, if it, excuse me, just one moment. Board, we'll go through these three speakers quickly, and then we'll take a short recess. Lola Smith, followed by Jamie Smith, followed by Ronnie Johnson, I think, or Raleigh Johnson? And thank you. Good evening.
Hello, my name's Lola Smith. I'm twelve years old, and I'm with the Youth Chapter of Women's Voices of Southwest Florida. Until I feared I would lose it, I never loved to read. One did not love breathing. I thought that quote was particularly relevant today. It's from To Kill a Mockingbird. I love that book. The funny thing is, when I recall the story, I don't think about the lightly referenced insult, or the uncensored language. I think about the ending. You see, in the end of To Kill a Mockingbird, Atticus must make a choice. He can cover up a murder to protect his son, or he can tell the truth. Every parent wants to protect their child, but Atticus understood the importance of not being hypocritical in front of his children. He taught his children about justice and accountability, and he wanted to stand by those convictions and believe the system would rightfully find the folks involved innocent. Atticus was put in an impossible situation, to put his personal beliefs first or to trust the system he was a part of. Today, you must all ask yourself the same question. You have a system in place to allow parents to opt kids out of books. You have a system in place to ensure materials are appropriate for school. Do you trust the system you are a part of? If the answer is no, ask yourself why. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Jamie Smith, followed by, I'm gonna mess it up, Miss Johnson, Mr. Johnson. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Journey Smith. I am a Florida public high school student, and I'm here with Women's Voices of Southwest Florida. I took the one less traveled by, and that has made all the difference. Most of you have probably heard that line. It's from the poem The Road Not Taken by Robert Frost, which is one of the most popular poems in America. I took the one less traveled by, and that has made all the difference. The popular understanding of this poem comes from that iconic line. Most Americans believe it's about achieving success by straying from the beaten path, by forging one's own way. In truth, the rest of the poem reveals the reality. Both roads were equally worn, and the line about, and the line about the less traveled road, a lie the narrator will tell others about his success. You see Robert Frost's poem, you see, Robert Frost's poem is a lesson in manipulation. It's also a lesson in taking lines out of context. It is easy to read almost any book and find at least one line that, when taken out of context, can lead a reader to believe the subject matter is something else. When we pick through novels looking for something to be offended by, we overlook all the important messages the works are meant to convey. Last by Elin Hopkins warns about the damage caused by addiction. Drama by Raina Telgmeier is about inclusion and teamwork. Looking for Alaska by John Green is about grief and finding meaning in life. Reducing these works to short excerpts in order to get a reaction is not only insulting to the authors, but also to the students like myself who read them. Students deserve better. Stop using us as political pawns.
Thank you so much. If you could restate your name, I am so sorry, I totally messed it up. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rain Johnson with Women's Voices of Southwest Florida's Youth Chapter. I'm a kid who pretty much grew up in private school. I'm not really ashamed of that. It's definitely morphed me to a different person than I am now, but I have always been a reader, always. I've been reading chapter books since the second grade. I remember my favorite series being Junie B. Jones, actually. I always adored her for her courage to not be ashamed of herself, to be proud of her flaws and her faults, and her weak points, and the fact that she talked back when she knew she could get in trouble. She talked back anyways. She rolled her eyes, and she was sassy, and I admired her for that. Another book series I enjoyed was Goosebumps. I always loved the little thrills you could get from the little horror show series. Now I read banned books, because the books I loved then, Junie B. Jones, Goosebumps, they're banned. Junie B. Jones is banned because she was a sassy brat, teaching kids to be disrespectful to their parents. Goosebumps was banned because it was too scary, apparently. It was too scary for little horror shows, little horror series, books that are less than ten chapters. I'm gonna read a little section out of context from this book.
Order.
Is that how we lived then? But we lived as usual. Everyone does now, most of the time. Whatever is going on as usual, even this is usual now, we lived as usual by ignoring. Ignoring isn't the same as ignorance. You have to work at it. Nothing changes instantaneously. In a gradually heated bathtub, you'd boil to death before you knew it. There were stories in the newspaper, of course, corpses in ditches or wood.
Thank you, your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you. We're bored, we're gonna take a ten-minute break. We'll be back at five till eight. Thank you. If we could, if we could take our seats to... Could we please take our seats? Could we take our seats? Thank you. It's on. Good evening. Could we reconvene, please? Take your seats. Ladies and gentlemen, we're calling the meeting back to order. Please have a seat so we can call the meeting back to order. Ladies and gentlemen, we are calling the meeting back to order. Please have a seat. Thank you. Next, I'm gonna teach her, have her take whistling lessons. Thank you all so much. Okay. Our next speakers, Denise Ward, followed by Seneca Bristol, followed by Kimberly Cox, please, if you'll line up. Good evening, how are ya?
I'm good, how are you today? All right, can I have this? All right. I wanna thank you for allowing me to speak today. My daughter is an avid reader, has been since like second grade, was able to read. We were in Orange County originally and she was able to read, they had this program about how many books you can read in passing tests and she always just surpassed all the goals. And as she became a reader, she started reading more mature books because she was good at it and it was the one thing that she loved and she enjoyed. And, Lord, that girl reads books this big. And she's a speed reader, so it takes me two weeks to read a book, it takes her two hours. It's amazing what she could accomplish. And I remember at one time at Christmas, my mother-in-law saw that we gave her the Harry Potter books and she was pissed. She didn't think that was right, because Harry Potter wasn't an appropriate book because it had witches in it. And we explained to my mother-in-law that it has so many other core values, yes, there is a piece of this, but they also celebrated Christmas as well. And she never read the books. She only listened to where, without going into detail or patronizing anyone, she listened to a certain person or a group and she believed them without reading it herself, to know the full context and to know what the story was truly about. And these things are so important. Books are important. You talk about some of these experts that you have, that have been read today, those are human trafficking stories. And those poor kids go through it. I worked with foster children for years and I know what they've gone through and those stories are real. And human trafficking isn't what you think it is. It is about the average kid in the school system. It is not anything else. So, these stories are important.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Seneca Bristol, followed by Kimberly Cox, followed by Dana Fernandez. Good evening.
Hello. Hi, my name is Seneca Bristol, I'm the Vice President of the Youth Chapter of Women's Voices of Southwest Florida. I have become a home, I have been a homeschooler for a decade and as someone with educational rights, I can confidently explain how essential a diverse and open-minded environment is where every student can exercise their right to learn and explore freely. Public schools don't have these rights anymore because extremists continue to strip students of them. If you continue to censor materials for high school, for high schoolers, you will watch them all fail. You treat these students as if they don't have their own ideas, as if they aren't real people who deserve real respect. Just because some parents are not comfortable teaching their kids about race, drugs, sex and sexuality doesn't mean all families are uncomfortable learning about such things. I would like to share a few quotes from different authors about book banning and I think you'll learn a thing or two. "There are worse crimes than burning books. One of them is not reading them," said by Joseph Brodsky. "Let children read whatever they want and let, and then talk about it with them. If parents and kids can talk together, we won't have as much censorship because we won't have as much fear," said by Judy Blume. "He who destroys a book becomes ki-" Sorry. "He who destroys a good book kills reason itself," said by John Milton. P.S. Books don't kill kids, guns do." Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Cox, followed by Dana Fernandez, followed by Sean Charrow. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Kimberly Cox, I'm with the Women's Voices of Southwest Florida. I'm a proud parent of a non-binary child. I would like to thank the members of this board that are on the right side of history and I'd like to point out again that Moms for Liberty is a designated hate group that regularly attacks the LGBTQ+ community and that hate groups should not have a say in the public school system. I'm an avid reader, I have been since I was a child. I got lots of free Pizza Hut pizzas and people my age will understand that.
Order, please.
Since it was, but since, I'm gonna talk about a few of these books because I'm familiar with most of them, but since it's like thirty-four of them, I can only talk about a few. "Go Ask Alice" is the story of a young woman who tries drugs, becomes an addict, ends up being a runaway and living a hard life. She tries and fails repeatedly to get clean. These are things that kids actually go through, so let's focus more on mental health services and drug addiction specialists instead of banning books. "The Handmaid's Tale," it's easy to see why Moms for Liberty wants this book banned, it's because it's their playbook. No one ever wants the other team to have their playbook. "The Bluest Eye" is on the list for depicting sexual assault and incest. This content helps kids understand the complexities of these traumatic situations by giving them material and characters that they can relate to. It also may help them express any abuse that they have experienced. It also discusses representation and why it is so important to see how beauty has been tied to whiteness and how to break down the idea that the lighter the skin tone, the more beauty you possess. "The Grasshopper Jungle" is a story of a teen exploring the sexuality during an apocalypse. The idea of a bisexual character is not scary, it's relatable. If you're uncomfortable with the content of these books, you should focus more on stopping the real world from, or protecting their children in the real world from school shootings, drugs, rape, molestation, racism, bigotry, homophobia and groups like Moms for Liberty who seek to hurt my child.
Thank you, your time has expired.
Thank you. Dana Fernandez, followed by Sean Charrow, followed by Raquel Molino. Good evening.
Good evening. So, I will ask that if you have young children listening to this, that you stop now.
Order, please.
This book, this romance book that is found in SCPS schools, is labeled for young adults. Established definition is between nineteen to thirty-nine, not children in K through twelve. I feel that I really should remind everyone here of the statute that was cited earlier during the presentation, which I am very happy that there is a procedure for evaluating these books, that's wonderful. And I love the fact that parents can opt their children into certain books, so that's restricted. However, allow me to read this portion. "Any book pamphlet, magazine, printed matter, however reproduced, or sound recording that contains any matter defined in 847.001, explicit and detailed verbal descriptions or narratives accounts of sexual excitement or sexual conduct and that is harmful to minors." That's what we are here to talk about. Allow me also to explain that it also states, "Any person violating any provision of this section commits a felony in the third degree." So, with that said, the excerpts from this book, I'll read a few, but the words are, again, I know this won't make a difference, but "ask twenty-seven times, bitch three, cock one, fuck thirteen, piss eleven, prick twelve and shit thirty-six." Excerpts include, "The sound you make when I'm inside you. Slid invisible hands down my breasts between my legs. Plunged that finger inside me, guided himself into me. Hips rolled in gentle thrusts and he pushed in and in and in. Let me adjust to the fullness of him. Withdrew, pulled out, then thrust back in excruciating slowness. Moved my hips urging him deeper, harder. Two males making me sweat in one morning had hands slid between my legs brazenly cupping."
Thank you, your time has expired.
If this doesn't bring sexual arou- arousal.
Thank you, your time has expired.
Sean Charrow, followed by Raquel Molino, followed by Julie Ann Reitner, please. Good evening, Sean.
My name is Sean Charrow, I am a graduate of the Seminole County Public School System Life, Tom, member or citizen of Sanford. Selecting age-appropriate reading material for our children is not book banning regardless of the hyperbolic claims from those who want to play the victim card. This book, for example, is currently available to high school students in Seminole County. In this book, you- In this book, you can find the words ass 18 times, fuck 29 times, bitch 17 times, goddamn nine times, piss 24 times, prick four times, and shit 26 times. As a parent, and I hope to be a grandparent someday, when I suggest that such reading materials may not be appropriate for impressionable minds, and as this book here, Fallout, is available to high schoolers, there are others that are available to elementary school students and that I think they're just as bad. And some of the stuff that we've been read here tonight, if it was turned into a movie, the Motion Picture Association of America wouldn't allow children under these ages to go see these movies. I don't understand why we're allowing these into schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Raquel Molino followed by Julie Ann Rechner followed by Liza Covelli. Good evening.
It's me again, Raquel Molina.
Order, please.
Greetings. I'm Raquel Molina. I will be reading a few excerpts and saying a few words from a romance book that may contend of an adult nature and will include words that some listeners may find offensive. If you are under 18 years old, yes, a minor, please exit the room now. Currently, the pornographic book is in our middle schools and high school in Seminole County. The following words appear in the book many times. Fuck 62 times. Pussy three times. It's depressing to say these words, but I'm going to say it. Shit eight times.
Order.
Playboy one time. Wow. Sex eight times. Bitch 10 times. Ass seven times. Dick 26 times. And the list goes on and on. Unbelievable, but not surprised. And a few of the excerpts are as follow. "I know you're a slut. You smell like cum. Do I make you wet? Jesus, fuck. Sit down." In conclusion, this romance novel is not an appropriate library contact for K through 12 schools in Seminole County. If a minor can't purchase a Playboy and other adult magazines at the store, then that means it shouldn't be in the school's library. I totally agree. If you wish to have your kids read this filthy novel, get it from the public library or purchase it online. Now I'm concerned about porn in the school library and abuse again towards our most vulnerable children in Seminole County Public School. If federal law strictly prohibits the distribution of filthy matter to a minor, why is pornographic book-
Thank you. Julie Ann Reiner- Rechner, maybe? I'm sorry, Liza Covelli and Alex Kovievich. Hi, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, board members and Superintendent Beeman. When my patriot friends from Moms for Liberty asked recently if anyone would be willing to read excerpts from certain books in our school libraries, my initial reaction was, oh heck no. I had seen and heard stories from other school board meetings where these types of books are read aloud and found it both embarrassing and revolting that this type of filth was being made available to our kids. And being an unapologetic person of strong faith, I had no interest in listening to it, much less reading it aloud in front of anyone. However, after some thought, I decided in the spirit of love, truth, and decency to go ahead and take one for the team, as they say. So you may not be able to stop a child from digesting poison, but you as a board can at least keep the arsenic out of the house. However, if a parent consents to allowing their child access to it, then the ensuing results fall on them. I proceed with excerpts from this literary masterpiece currently adorning the shelves of our high school libraries. And I'll let you be the judge as to the intellectual value therein. "I hooked up with Dylan Douglas, so maybe part of that earth sway had something to do with the downers' weed and cheap beer, a dizzying combo on an empty stomach. One night, we were mostly naked and all knotted up in each other's arms and the time just seemed to say, 'I want to, please.'" Dylan was just so cute. "Are you sure?" He said it right before I stripped off my panties and he confirmed your positive. "Can't wait to get her all alone, pour her nakedness into me, slick silk skin against my own eliciting the proper reaction." I was 14 and he was 20 and I understood his interest had nothing to do with romance. I also knew there was something not quite right about a guy that old wanting to get off on me. He was mostly hungry for ejaculation. Just those awful hands grasping, pushing, pulling, insisting after I'd said no. He was bigger, I was quicker. One kick, well-placed, slowed him down long enough for me to run. After all, I had decided to try straight."
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Lisa, Liza Covelli, Alex Kovievich, and Wanya Allen. Good evening.
I am Lisa. I am a Seminole County resident. I am a parent of three kids, one graduate of Seminole County, one who's in Seminole County, one who has been put into private school. I'm a former teacher. I was a homeschool teacher and I sub. So I am here to read some parts of books that I just, I can't believe these are even our schools. There are so many great books to read and I feel like there's a better middle ground we can come and negotiate on versus these kind of books being in here. So a couple parts I'll read is, "Uh-oh, I go and we're down to the carpet strip of the floor with all those million of, millions of nice books watching and oh lord, I am on her. She's pressing up and I'm pressing down. Wet mouth and warm skin under the thin girl shirt, my palms stroking, brushing everywhere. Sweating fingers edging into my pants, crawling to my hard dick, holding, squeezing, pressing, feeling, fingers stop. And I want to cry, but she's pulling my hand to her jeans. Unzip panties elastic, heat slippery sweaty, fingers pushing mine inside, sliding, gliding, hips moving, one finger, two finders, rocking, moaning, pulling, pushing, oh lord, oh lord, beautiful Keisha, wet, hot pussy fucking my fingers. Please, please, please let my dick and then someone's at my back snatching me up. And Keisha screams and her on her feet so fast, we run, pants open, shirts off, through the books, the musty dusty tree smell, winding, waving, breathing hard from sex and fear. And I go, feel this, put her hand on my jeans over my hard dick. She laughs and goes, well damn, that's nothing new. And I look at her deep eyes and her big old feet and we're kissing, watering tongues, springy lips, tugging, pulling, and we lay down. And she peels off my shirt and I unbutton her shoot, pretty mini, and soon we're skin to skin. Stroking over tits and ass, stomach loss, mush brain."
Thank you. Your time is-
Thank you.
Good evening. Alex, Seminole County. What else? Is that it? Watching the new Seminole County Vice President of Moms of Liberty who are desperately trying to cause civil discourse by attending our nation's second attempted insurrection, taking pictures with the likes of Roger Stone, a convicted felon, Jim Jordan, a coach that turned a blind eye to sexual abuse of his students, and praising the always classy Lauren Boebert, gloating on Instagram like it's amusing to be surrounded by domestic terrorists is not a flex. A chapter in Indiana presented their August issue with a quote from Hitler, "He alone who owns the youth gains the future." At their silly get-together in Philadelphia, one of the founders, founders literally got on the stage and said that she stood with that mom. What is more outrageous is that some of these women are of Jewish descent and had families as fortunate as mine to enter this country to live out their lives in peace and with freedom. Adding new citizens of different cultures and religion to the melting pot of the US is the foundation for which we are built on. Banning their ability to have access to literature that reflects their history is abhorrent and 100% fascist. We, the people, do not co-parent with Nazi sympathizers. We will not go away. We will not allow women backed by dark money and narcissistic characteristics to resurrect the idiocy of the lost cause propagated by the ego-wounded daughters of the Confederacy. As a daughter of the American Revolution, it is laughable that women that weren't part of our community 20 years ago have infiltrated to spread nonsense and misinformation. Thought they would come into this meeting and actually do something. Please stop the hate, stop the division. You are the problem and we aren't going anywhere."
Thank you.
Order.
Wanya Allen followed by Helen Back followed by Renee Davis. Good evening.
Hello. So my name is Wanya. I attend school in Seminole County as a college student and I'm also a Seminole State resident, unlike some people. But what I want to state here is today, I stated before, as I'm a college student, someone who has had the privilege of experiencing a broader range of literature and ideas than ever before, I'd like to address a crucial topic that has been a matter of concern in recent times, the banning of books in our schools. It is my firm belief that such bans not only infringe upon the rights of students, but also hinder their agitation ability to confront ignorance. The Bluest Eye, you see, I provided a title. The Bluest Eye, a powerful novel by Toni Morrison, provides insight into the complex issues of race, self-esteem, and societal expectations. Banning this book deprives students of the opportunity to engage in meaningful discussions about these vital topics instead of shielding them from the world's realities. We should be equipped our students with the tools to confront and address these issues head-on. Furthermore, the book All Boys Aren't Blue, which has been banned in some states, serves as an invaluable resource for LGBTQ plus youth. It provides a voice for those who may feel marginalized or misunderstood, promoting empathy, inclusion, and respect among students. In inclusion, I urge the Seminole State, the Seminole County School District to reconsider any bans on books like Gender Queer, The Bluest Eye, and All Boys Aren't Blue. Banning books, no matter the intention, ultimately diminishes the agitational experience. It stifles our ability to challenge our beliefs, confront ignorance, and grow as a compassionate informed individual. Ask college students to be understanding the importance of intellectual freedom and the pursuit of knowledge. It is our responsibility to ensure that the same opportunities are available to every student.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Helen Back followed by Renee Davis followed by Sarah Parker.
Hi, good evening. Hi, my name is Helen Back. I'm with Women's Voices. I'm here to represent people who can't be here, who live in Seminole. I think vicarious learning is one of the most important things that I learned how to do as a teen because the whole drug thing scared me to death. I was militantly drug-free all throughout my teens and twenties, never had a sip of alcohol till I was 31. I was one of the kids, a latchkey kid, that was ultra-responsible for all my friends. I nursed people out of suicide. I helped people avoid overdoses. I had to deal with a lot of stuff that teens don't deal with, they're not supposed to deal with, but we deal with. We've got a youth chapter and they're, they're pretty open about what kinds of kids they have to nurse through some pretty dangerous situations. And I'm so glad we have resources where we can learn to vicariously figure out situations without having to actually go through them ourselves. I brought The Bluest Eye, forgot to get it while I was getting up, but I've had that in my library. I've moved like 17 times in five different states, but that book will always be in my library because it affected me in such a profound way when I first read it. I was reading through it and I have highlighted parts that I don't remember 20 years ago. Please let us learn vicariously and just enjoy literature. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Renee Davis followed by Sarah Parker followed by Cory Blakely. Good evening.
Good evening, Superintendent Beeman, Chairman Crowe, Vice Chair Sanchez, and members of the board. My name is Renee Davis and I'm a resident of Brevard County and a concerned book nerd. It chips away at my soul seeing books removed from shelves. It's perhaps one of the most authoritarian acts one can impose on an education system and it threatens the very nature of our human creativity, of human expression, really. Someone earlier said that this conversation isn't about banning books. And I agree. It's only about banning some books that a hateful group doesn't like. Fundamentally, book banning is about looking at the face of authors and telling them that their story doesn't matter. They don't matter. They don't matter because they're different. They don't matter because their color might be different, their sexual orientation might be different, they might be gender non-conforming or not identify with gender at all. Their viewpoint on life is different. And that's a good thing. It's the beauty of human life. It's how we progress. It's how we evolve. Books are some of society's most precious knowledge artifacts. Removing them from the past stifles our future. Denying kids the right to read doesn't make anyone safer. All it does is decrease the quality of social progress and knowledge of an entire generation. In banning books, you deny thousands of adults across Florida the consent to decide on what is and is inappropriate for their children. Book banners hurt society. Banning books is the antithesis to a renaissance. It's the day we stop seeking knowledge, the day we stop dreaming, stop telling our stories. It's the day we enter a dark ages that I don't want to be a part of. Kids deserve to dream. Parents deserve to parent. And a bunch of soccer moms talking about how they hate the diary of Anne Frank over Sunday tea, do not speak for me.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
And I hope they don't speak for this board. Thanks.
Thank you. Sarah Parker, Cory Blakely followed by Caitlin, standing summit. Thank you.
My name is Sarah Parker and I'm the president of Women's Voices of Southwest Florida. I want to first say to the man that spoke earlier about your son, I hope that you guys do something for him. For someone that has a special needs kid, I hope that you do and I have faith that you will. But with that being said, that there are children and other people in this room that have been sexually assaulted and have been sex trafficked. A lot of people know about me because they see me on the media and this is not a story that I've told publicly and I've only released a blog about it. At 14 years old, my mother died. At 16, I was pimped out. My first client was when my pimp was texting him pretending I was in school even though I had dropped out. My first client was a Republican. We talked about it. My first client was an Army veteran. We talked about it. You know what I did? When he put his dick inside of me, I cried. I cried for my mother. I cried because I couldn't stop it from happening. I cried because I didn't have enough, I didn't have money to feed myself. And you know what I had to do? I went to a grown-ass man and gave him half of that money because I had to. I pulled myself up by the bootstraps. If you heard any of these, these books that they have been reading without the context, I want to let you know, you are not dirty. Your story is not dirty. You are powerful, you are loved, and you are cared about. And I didn't find solace in this book that I was raised by. I found solace in reading books like Go Ask Alice. I found solace finding and figuring out that I was not the only one. I didn't talk to it. At the age of 25, I went home. I sat with my great-grandmother and I told her what I went through.
Please be seated.
I told her what I went through and she was horrified. And it wasn't because she didn't care about me. I'd left. I have two beautiful children now. I have a ton of U chapter that anytime that they are sexually assaulted, they are raped, we will talk about it. We will go into detail about it and we are there for them. And that is what parents do. That is what community does. My community in South Carolina would never, ever have sat up here, read those stories without any context or a title. That's petty. If your membership is that low, then get in your members.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cory Blakely.
Order, please. Order.
Followed by Caitlin followed by Marcos Brewer. Good evening.
Good evening. So now do you see why books are hated and feared? They show the pores in the face of life. The comfortable people only want wax moon faces, poreless, hairless, expressionless. Hello, board. My name is Cory. I am with Women's Voices of Southwest Florida and I reside here in Seminole County. I want to start off by commending the board for not allowing PragerU to be taught in our schools. We, as a community, thank you for doing your part in removing resources that- We as a community, thank you for doing your part in removing resources that are proven to be disinformation and used to indoctrinate our youth. Right now, Board, if we do not speak up, we are the complacent people who are allowing our books and worldview to be burned. That quote that I read at the beginning was from Fahrenheit 451. Just three days ago in Montana, elected officials had burned a pile of books. How is that not concerning? Literature like Fahrenheit 451, 1984, Brave New World, and Lord of the Flies, all of which are now banned, helped shaped the understanding of the world around me and led me to be a functioning and conscious member of society and our democracy, like they may have done for you, Board. Reading literature that tests our worldview has been proven to open up our understanding of the society and communities around us and creates a more passionate and empathetic person. The book banning Human Centipede is here tonight to fuel an audience and get media clicks. I implore you, Board, to not listen to them in their feeble attempts to remove literature that helps form and develop the minds of our future so that they too can function adequately in our society. Removing books and promoting Christian-based anti-government curriculum like Our Housewives in Blue has been proven to create a public health crisis. I implore you, Board, to listen to those of us here tonight that represent the beauty that is Seminole County, not an anti-LGBTQ, anti-government, anti-education group.
Thank you.
Thank you. Caitlin, followed by Marcus, followed by Cheryl Anderson. Hi, good evening.
Hi. My name's Caitlin Danny Heesamitz. I'm the founder and vice president of Women's Voices of Southwest Florida. And I would like to start first by thanking this board. I actually reside down in Sarasota County, so I'm used to a shitshow run by Bridget Ziegler. I'm very familiar with Moms, I'm sorry, Clan Carrent hood and their attempts to bully, you know, school boards into bending the knee, so you'd say. So I would like to thank you. This is probably the most pleasant school board meeting I've ever been at. I'm a parent and I've got four kids in public, I've got a baker's dozen actually kids in public school. And, you know, parental rights are for all parents, not just the ones that are the loudest. There's not a whole lot that I can say that hasn't been articulated phenomenally by my homies here. So I also would just like to take this opportunity, I guess, to read out of context since that seems to be the going theme. Alright, this is tough. Certified freak, seven days a week. I don't know if I should say this. Wet ass pussy make his pull-out game week.
Order.
Now, this isn't in any of the books in any of the schools, it's on the radio, right? My kids taught me those lyrics. It was a very strange day, but I'm glad we had that conversation. I think that if Clan Carrent hood is so dedicated to protecting our students and our kids, y'all should work to ban Cardi B and probably Beetlejuice as well.
Order.
And on that note, it's going to be great to continue this relationship with y'all. I have seven seconds. Thank you. And that's it, I'm just, there we go. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Marcus, followed by Cheryl, followed by Jen Cousins.
Hi, I'm Marcus Brewer with Women's Voices of Southwest Florida. And I want to read a quick poem, Beware the Banning of Books in Speech. I'm not sure what's happening in this country. Sometimes I think it's overrun by fools. In some states, they're banning books. In my state, Florida, they're banning talking and gender and sexuality in schools. While closing up the bookstore the other night, I was thinking how crazy this can be as I was re-shoving the books they banned in Tennessee. Topic's not allowed to be discussed, book's not allowed to be read. I don't have the words to express my sadness and dismay, so I walked around our bookstore and listened to what the voices around me had to say. Kurt Vonnegut was first to speak at how book banning displeases. "I hate," he said, "that Americans are taught to hear some books and some ideas as though they were diseases." Mark Twain was next on banning speech and books. "He doesn't want to see us do it." "Censorship," he said, "is telling a man he can't have a steak just because a baby cannot chew it." Next stood Benjamin Franklin, with his willingness to teach. Whoever would overthrow the liberty of a nation, he said, must begin by subduing the freeness of its speech. Steven Shabowski waited his turn in the bookstore to be heard that night. He said, "Banning books gives us silence when we need speech. It closes our ears when we need to listen and it makes us blind when we need sight." Isaac Anthony waited in next. He was instincting what he was conceding. "Any book worth banning," he said, "is a book that's worth reading." Up and down the bookstore, I walked, listening to a multitude of authors from the president passed. Unfortunately for me, I saved the best for last. It was Maya Angelou, whose words were always inspiring, thought-provoking and wise. She said, "You may kill me with your hatefulness, but still like air I rise." I thank Maya and all the other authors for their insights as I turned off all the lights, then wished them a calm and peaceful sleep as I locked up for the night. Filled with hope that for those who want to ban books and speech, there will become a day when they will take a walk through a bookstore or a library and listen to what the voices have to say. That poem was by Jim Yarmen. We really do need any book bans, we need to regulate.
Thank you, your time has expired.
Thank you. Cheryl Anderson, followed by Jen Cousins, followed by Adolfo Ruiz. Good evening.
Hello. My name is Cheryl Anderson. And about a year ago, I decided to move to Seminole County to be with my grandsons. I have seven grandchildren that are in Florida public schools. And much as I do my other volunteer work on their behalf, I'm here to speak on their behalf. I had a pretty little speech written up until I listened to folks today. And I want to remind you all of something. As a child, my escape was books. But I didn't live near the library and like a lot of children here in Seminole County. So my books came from school. But even when I could get a book, there were no books that looked like me. There were no books that talked about my life. We had places we couldn't go. And we had words for those who were different. There were folks all around me in my community that used words I knew I had better not use. Many of those are the words you heard today. As a child, I knew there were consequences to using those words. But then, as a high school student, I found a prolific author by the name of Frank Yorby. And he told stories in a myriad of historical settings, and there were people who looked like me. But I had to wait until I got to a teacher's library to find the first few books before I could begin my search to find the rest. His graphic descriptions led me to something important.
Thank you, your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you. Jen Cousins, Adolfo Ruiz, and Jennifer Augusta Ruiz. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Jen Cousins, I am a mom of four kids who go to public schools here in Florida. While a small vocal group hijacks your meeting in an effort to ban books, I'd like to remind the board and everyone listening that context matters. What you're seeing a nationally-recognized hate group do tonight is insincere. Reading passages out of context in the hopes of provoking you to tell them to stop speaking is a juvenile tactic and insulting to your intelligence. We all know that every single book they are attacking is so much more than one passage that they don't like. These books all address real-life issues and the real world cannot be closed off to our children. Otherwise, how will they grow into the future leaders of society that we want them to be? You're hearing random passages tonight that might make you feel uncomfortable if you've never read the book they're being quoted from. That being said, you must remember that those quotes only represent a small portion of the overall story of each book, and they were selected specifically to arouse a negative response from you. So let them have their moment and fail. You are smarter than them and must not let their childish antics cause a knee-jerk reaction. Just as the majority of us respect and trust our teachers, we have respect for this board to do right by our students and not allow an angry mob to dictate policy. We know that you cannot change the laws that have been passed, but we also know that you can interpret and implement them in a manner that is least intrusive and disruptive to a high-quality public education. And that means banning as few books as possible. As I said earlier, context matters. Perhaps you remember the story from June where our Moms for Liberty chapter in Indiana put a quote from Hitler in their newsletter. Somehow they were surprised by the backlash and insisted that the quote was taken out of context. While we all doubt that very much, you can see the flaws in their hypocrisy and reckless quest for attention. Do not fall for these ridiculous ploys. There are already policies in place if this group wants to object to a book. Make them put in the work if they want to rob students of important literature. Thank you.
Thank you. Adolfo Ruiz, followed by Jennifer Augusta Ruiz, followed by Kristen Savage. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Adolfo. I'm a resident in Seminole County. I have a child that goes to Seminole County School. And my first time speaking out loud here, I'm referencing this subject, so I'm a little off. But one thing I do know for sure is comparing banning these books from these schools are not the same thing as the communists, the socialists, or the monarchs banning books nationally, statewide, from stores, from public libraries, from education, from all sources. This is not the same. I'm going to read to you a book that I believe it's inappropriate and should belong in a pornography bookstore, not in my school's education or my kids' education. And this is both in public schools and in private schools. This book has profanity. The words are ass eight times, bitch six times, cock three times, fuck eighteen times, piss three times, prick two times, pussy one time, shit ten times. I'm going to read one excerpt. Threesomes. How often awkward the indelicate weave of body parts tangles into many ways. Three mouths uncertain of what needs to be kissed. Three tongues with a plethora of place to lick and spaces to explore. Here's another one. Sometimes just want a loud, long, licentious fuck. Anything goes, no sound allowed, but the soft speak of sheets and unbidden vocalizations. But that kind of sex is often best enjoyed with not expectations of repeat performance. A five-star dessert compared to sugar-free gel.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jennifer Augusta Ruiz, followed by Kristen Savage, followed by Katie Murphy. Good evening.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Jennifer. I'm a Seminole County resident and my son does go to Seminole County schools. I'm not a bigot, I'm not a racist, and I'm just a concerned parent. I'm going to read an excerpt from a book that's in Seminole County schools. And I'm first going to read from a list of words that are in this book. Ass fourteen times, bitch five, I'm going to put my glasses on, I'm sorry. Dick eight, fag faggot once, fuck twenty-eight, goddamn five, piss fourteen, pussy one, shit fifteen. Any young child shouldn't be seeing this in their school. Now I'm going to read some excerpts and some of it's going to be pretty hard for me and I may not finish. Touching me, using me. The first time I masturbated, I pretended it was Rob jerking me off. It's strange because I'm really not gay. I love my wife and having sex with her. But once in a while, this need rises up and I want Rob to jerk me off. After dessert, we go upstairs, Joe and Rob, who does a whole lot more than jerk Joe off. Here's one. We needed the money for rent and stuff. I was thirteen, but no big deal. One of daddy's friends broke me in when I was nine. As daddy says, tight pussy costs a pretty penny. I skid to a halt before I mention her glorious tits. And then I went and fucked it all up with drugs and gambling, financing those by offering myself up for sale. I think that's enough. I don't even think that I could do the rest of it.
Your time has expired, thank you.
Kristen Savage, followed by Katie Murphy, followed by Judy Ning. Good evening.
Hello, SPS School Board members and Superintendent Beeman. My name is Kristen Savage. My kids attend SPS schools. I want to say thank you for your support within our community and for listening to our concerns tonight. I'm here to discuss a topic that goes to the core of our foundational values, the banning of any books in our schools. Throughout history, our freedom to explore ideas has been fundamental. We must oppose all efforts to prohibit books in our schools and it not only endangers intellectual freedom, but also hinders our ability to learn, grow, and think critically. Let's take a moment to consider the incredible power of literature in nurturing empathy and understanding. When we engage with books that explore diverse lives and perspectives, we gain insights which foster tolerance, compassion, and inclusivity. I'd like you to reflect on your teen years in high school. Have you ever read a book and thought, wow, that genuinely harmed me and I wish somebody protected me from it? Chances are, probably not. But I can guarantee, like me, you have read books that you felt a deep connection with. They may have helped you through a hard time, they may have helped you understand somebody else's perspective or something that they've gone through. I can think of a few books that have done this for me. Handing out scripts for people to read from books that they probably never even heard of, let alone never read, is not protecting our children. It is just the dynamics of causing dramatics and control. Where do we draw the line? Let's embrace literature's power to educate, unite, oppose book bans, uphold intellectual freedom, and let parents opt their children's out when they feel it's necessary. I do not need anybody else helping me parent my children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Katie Murphy, followed by Judy Ning, followed by Deborah Donahue. Good evening, Katie.
Good evening. Chairman Kraus, Superintendent Beeman, School Board members. My speech is a little bit out of line with what's going on here today, but I'm here as the PTA Vice President of Advocacy for Seminole County PTA. And I just wanted to remind you of the hundreds of people in our PTA and what we stand for. So with one voice, we advocate for all children. With resolutions, we form our voice. With these important documents, we define our voice and redefine our voice for all the members to use when we work to make every child's potential a reality. The National PTA believes that students need access to information in order to explore and experience a diversity of ideas in a pluralistic society. PTA recognizes and supports the rights of parents to guide their children in choosing appropriate reading and educational materials. We support teachers in developing classroom libraries to include appropriate reading and educational materials. PTA also supports the rights of both public libraries and school libraries to provide factually correct and historically accurate information and materials that are free of censorship based on bias, partisanship, or doctrinal disapproval. They also urge their members and leaders at all levels to monitor, support, and advocate for laws, regulations, and policies that provide age-appropriate, developmentally-appropriate educational materials that include family structures, gender identity, sexual orientation, and sexual health, and present the diverse racial and ethnic heritage of this country and the contributions of all groups, including historically and currently marginalized groups in the educational materials and textbooks used by our schools. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Judy, followed by Deb Donahue, followed by Thomas Krieger. Good evening, Judy.
Good evening. My name is Judy Ning and I'm a science teacher at Lake Howard High School. I'm back to provide additional information on how to retain teachers. Banning books is not helping to retain teachers. And if you are outraged by all the profane language that is heard in these books, try coming to a high school. Walking through the halls or in my classroom. I hear all of it. If I could hear just what was in the book, that's like one day. Anyway, back to why I came. You all, I provided you all the copy of Board Policy 3130. And if you look at letter B, which I think you're looking at, a teacher considered out of field shall be approved by the board to teach out of field after a determination that a teacher with appropriate certification coverage is not available. And if you need the reference conditions, I have that too, a copy of that. It goes on in letter C. When a teacher is assigned instructional duties in a class containing subject matter outside the field in which a teacher is certified, then skip ahead to the end, last one, the parents of all students... parents of all students in the class shall be notified in writing of such an assignment. SCPS's report on out-of-field teachers is dated 2022-23, but it's supposed to be updated thirty days within the semester. And parents, unless notified, do not have access to that information this year. Two of my chemistry classes were taken away and given to an uncertified teacher. Those two classes were replaced by a course I'm not familiar with. So I spent a lot of time and energy at home to prepare adequately for these classes. Another teacher had his anatomy and physiology classes taken away after teaching them for a decade, and they were given to a substitute. He is no longer in education. It's very clear there's something that can be done to help retain teachers. It's written in black and white in the School Board policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Donahue, followed by Thomas Krieger, followed by Tiffany Barbieri. Good evening.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Beeman. I'm Dr. Deborah Donahue, a resident of Seminole County, and I'm a longtime educator. My doctorate is in leadership and policy. I'm speaking tonight about removing books. The majority of the books that are being targeted anonymously, not naming titles, focus on LGBTQ and racial or ethnic minorities. All children need representation. Books allow children to be represented. A recent article in Education Weekly discusses how damaging the removal of books are to our students. Books with diverse characters help students develop empathy and the ability to work cooperatively with others who are different than they are. The literature that groups are actively working to remove contain content that may save a student's life, helps address complex problems in our society. The books address racism, sexual abuse, sexual trafficking, and suicide. The unfortunate reality is that these issues are issues our teens have to face. I had a child today have a parent deported. Our kids are facing these issues every day. And by taking these books away from our kids, by not trusting our educators and our media specialists, we're actively harming students. Teachers, the School Board, administrators do what's best for kids. Banning books is not best for children.
Thank you. Thomas Krieger, followed by Tiffany Barbieri, followed by T. McClory. Good evening.
Good evening, Board. For the lefties, I'd like you to listen closely. We talk about hijacking meetings and hate groups when a group of people here is from southwest Florida who does not go to Seminole County, but they feel their views are important. Not the case. I will let each and every one of you know on the Board, you are violating the law, and your day will come. The law specifically states minors cannot see pornography. This for all the people on the left, all your little red signs are super cute. Clash of Kings, a book from Seminole County, I'm not picking through anything. It says at the bottom, eighteen years or older to read the book. Why is it in our school? It says for adults only. Can you please tell me one adult that's in high school right now besides a teacher? You can't. That's okay, though. But again, we go through all of our little left things and everything we want to do. I wasn't going to read anything, but I'm going to. Would you like to fuck your kitchen wench, my lord? You can dust me with flour and suck gravy off my titties if you'd like. I didn't like scouring these pots no more liked than this cock in my pussy. Do you have to smell so bad, or you just finished fucking a pig? I haven't fucked no one since they took me, my lord. I don't think I'll fuck you after all. You were done by somebody else first. It's not your cock that interests me so much as what you stick it in. If anybody sitting over there who has children or in this audience who thinks that's appropriate, I will make sure I pray for you tonight, because all praise and glory, whether you have just signed up or not, goes to God. You can stick your fingers down, that's fine.
Please speak to the Board. Thank you.
But at the end of the day, you guys have a right. You're an elected official. Your job is to follow the law. The law states that people under the age of eighteen cannot see, hear, or have pornography. This is pornography. You are breaking the law, and as I said, your day will come. And for all the people out here who are here.
Order.
Everyone who is saying that, oh, Moms for Liberty's hate and all this, all you guys have done is say negative things about that group, so take a look in the mirror. And at the end of the day, I would like to quote Prime, Coach Prime, you didn't make me, you're not going to break me. And lady who said we'll be back, we're not going anywhere either. We'll see you later.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Order. Order, please.
Tiffany Barbieri.
Order.
Excuse me.
Order.
Tiffany Barbieri, followed by T. McClory, followed by Ray McClory. Hi, good evening.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Barbieri. I'd like to read some passages out of a book that was found in Seminole County Schools. Reaching for her breast, she hummed his touch, but didn't sing. Sunny let his hands wander down from her breast, down to meet the tufts of the hair that weighted him. She sang so softly, it was almost like a whisper, almost by the time his fingers found her wet. He put her in a folded tarp, spread her legs, and entered her. She screamed, but he placed his hand over her lips, and then put her fingers in his mouth. Now, I can keep going reading this smut, but personally, I think what's responsible or what's really comes down to is responsible parents don't want their children exposed to smut. They want their children to be taught how to read, how to write, how to do mathematics, and how to use critical thinking skills. What needs to be taught in this school is not pornography or sexualizing children, rather the focus should be on a person's constitutional rights. You can't utilize something that you don't understand. The Constitution needs to be taught in its entirety. Black law needs to be taught. Now, before you start calling me a racist, understand what black law is. Black law is a legal book filled with anti-constitutional legacies and anti- or, excuse me, semantics used to get around and violate the Constitution. I'll give you an example. I get pulled over for going ten miles over the speed limit. Under black law, words are used like murder vehicle, and they remove you from your constitutional rights. Police officer will hand me a traffic citation. By signing that citation, I agree to an unconstitutional recommendation. I will be forced to pay $250. However, under constitutional law, I take that same traffic citation. On it, I write, I do not consent. Under Section 242, Title 18, The Color of Law, a person has a right to travel in their automobile. Then I write an affidavit, have it signed lawfully, spend $15 not $250. And by the way, we are a.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Thank you.
T. McClory, followed by Ray McClory, followed by Peggy Smith. Good evening. Hi.
Good evening, Superintendent Beeman and School Board members. My name is T. McClory, and I live in Lake Monroe, Florida. I first want to start off by saying I hope that you thank all the media members and employees, the teachers, and administration who spent many hours scanning classroom libraries and school libraries. So when you visit the schools, please stop and thank them. I have lived and been involved in Seminole County Schools for 25 years. I'm a mother of a Seminole County graduate. I have been around so long, I am currently working side by side with another Seminole County employee that I had played blocks with in kindergarten. We need to continue to protect the freedom of every child and every parent in Seminole County, to learn in a safe and nurturing environment that prepares them for the real world. As I listened to some of the items that were read out loud, I'm thinking, these are not easy reading books. We don't read these out loud in class. These are books that are just checked out by students, and they decide to read. When a child is given the opportunity for critical thinking, and parents may be given a teachable moment with that child, not the agenda from groups who may not even have students in our community, then we will be prepared, and our students will be prepared for real-life situations. We are sending our students out into the world after high school. They need to continue to be prepared.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ray McClory, followed by Peggy Smith, followed by Leslie Kirshenbaum.
I'm Ray McClory. I'm a Seminole County resident for about 23 years now, and I'm going to make just some brief comments. When I was a student, I did not fit in with most of my other classmates, but I found comfort for reading books that had characters that I could relate to and had the same situations that I had. Also found that reading books about diverse characters helped me become a more rounded person. So I strongly urge you not to remove books that have diverse characters and teach diversity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Peggy Smith, followed by Leslie Kirshenbaum, followed by Kenneth Evers. Good evening.
Hi, how are you? Excuse me. I'm a Seminole County resident. My daughter's eight years old. In case you're unaware, but I have a feeling you are most certainly aware, normalizing is one of the hallmarks of grooming. The book and from which I will read an excerpt from, and that Seminole County students have access to in their taxpayer-funded public school libraries, does just that. Normalizes and even glorifies illegal and illicit behavior, manipulating our children into believing these behaviors are acceptable. Robin is making a sizable buy. I sit, growing more anxious with every passing second, watching her weigh a half ounce of meth into eight balls. She's into the deal heavy. I mean, there she is, holding enough crystal to send her away for a very, very long time. My hands shimmy as I reach for the bundle Robin passes me. It's different from the meth-making, the rounds last year. This is hard little rocks and not much powder. Robin pulls out a glass pipe, but I ask, can we do some lines? I long for that punch to my sinuses. You can't snort glass, Christina. You have to smoke this or shoot it. You're not into needles by chance, are you? And apparently, no fine white lines to watch disappear into my nose. Now, I would like to ask, how will my child be hurt by removing this book from school? What educational purpose does this book have? I would also like to ask you, in the process of when a book is investigated, when it's brought to your attention by a parent, is that book removed while the investigation is going on? Or does it remain in the library for children to have access to?
Time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Kirshenbaum, followed by Kenneth Evers, followed by Karen Calvo Ashbrenner. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Leslie Kirshenbaum. I'm a taxpaying homeowner in Seminole County with a kid still in the system. It's evident tonight that the message our School Board is sending by disregarding our pleas from last year and the list we provided to avoid this situation is that they wanted a spectacle. We sure aren't disappointing them. The presence of sexually explicit books in our children's libraries is just one of many concerns our district faces. For instance, there's a tendency to under-report school violence in order to maintain our falsely-inflated grade-A status. If the true numbers were revealed, we know the grants and funding you receive would disappear. The teachers who are on the front lines educating the children you desperately want the state to support, they can't even make a living off their wages as a teacher in this county. It doesn't shock me you're not taking action, and these books are still up. As one person wisely stated during the last School Board meeting, the School Board members tolerate us. Maybe it's time for us to reflect on these issues and come together as a community. Fun fact, humans have 80% in common. If we can figure out that 20%, we would be solid. But as far as leaving public schools alone and pulling out our kids, many have pulled our kids out, but public school kids still grow up with private and homeschooled kids, who eventually become employed citizens I have to deal with in the future. I'm sorry, but I'm doing my best to turn things around while I can, and I ain't going anywhere. And as far as the book, I don't need to hide it. If you want to give it some publicity, clout, whatever. Thirty-three snowfish, and it's basically about derogatory sexual activity, child prostitution, and killing your parents. We have nigger fifty-two, pussy three, shit 145, fuck fifteen, bitch seven.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Get these books off our shelves. Thank you.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Order.
Kenneth Evers, followed by Karen, followed by Nina Sandberg.
Hello.
Good evening.
Hello, my name is Kenneth Evers. I've been at Seminole County Public Schools since I was in kindergarten, continuing today as an employee. I went to a middle school a mile and a half away at Sanford Middle School. I came to this room several times for high school events from a veto high school. And I would like to ask the Board members here, my current employers, I suppose, to join me in telling this group of people coming in from multiple states with lists of books to ban, including in other states, A Wrinkle in Time, The Things They Carried, Brave New World, most tellingly, I would argue, Fahrenheit 451, in saying, get out of my house. Thank you.
Karen Calvo Ashbrenner, followed by Nina Sandberg, followed by Laura Montgomery. Good evening.
Hi, how are you tonight? My friends call me Casey. I have three children. I have a high schooler, a middle schooler, and an elementary student. I'm not only a mom, but I'm an educator. I studied early childhood education at DePaul University, which is a Catholic university. I came here tonight to say a bunch of things that a lot of other people have already said. So I'm going to read a passage from a book. When she carried her on her whoring so openly and flaunted her nakedness, I turned in disgust from her, as I turned in disgust from her sister, yet she increased her whoring, remembering the days of her youth, when she played the whore in the land and lusted after her lovers there, whose members were like those of donkeys and whose issue was like that of horses. I longed for the lewdness of your youth, when they handed your bosom and pressed your young breasts. This is from the Bible, Ezekiel.
Order. Order.
I ask the people who come, I ask the people who come, to understand that books have meaning to everybody in different ways. What you find offensive might save somebody's life. What you hear people talk about and you're offended by, other people find no concern in. Like the other teacher said, you should hear what high school kids say walking down the hall. Have you listened to them playing video games, the chat rooms they talk to? Honestly, your kids have a cellphone in their hand, they can get ahold of any book they want, any pornography they want, any context they want. You're killed, even if you are successful and you ban these books, all of you who are here holding your green cards, let kids know who can't reach books, they can get a library card at the Seattle Public Library, at the Bookland Private Library, they can get a book to get eBooks of all banned books.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Thank you.
Can I help you in a group? Good evening.
I'm Nina Sandberg. I cannot believe the lies that the Democrat activists told tonight. SCPS was supposed to teach my children The Diary of Anne Frank, Charlotte's Web, The Sneetches, Horton Hears a Who, et cetera. It isn't Moms for Liberty's fault that SCPS failed to do its job. The truth is that the Left has been trying to ban, censor, and rewrite all kinds of classic literature, including books by Ronald Dahl, R.L. Stein, Dr. Seuss, Mark Twain, et cetera. The Left has tried to ban books such as To Kill a Mockingbird, The Catcher in the Rye, and Of Mice of Men, et cetera. The truth is that the Left is constantly censoring, banning, and rewriting books while they simultaneously pretend that they are tolerant and that they are against censorship. They are hypocrites who pretend to be offended by classic literature while they simultaneously push obscene, explicit, lewd, adult-oriented pornography on children.
Order.
The Left demonizes parents who do not want their children to be exposed to adult-oriented pornography at school. The Left even approves of books that normalize pedophilia to children. There are no limits for the Left. As a Jewish-American, I have heard a huge number of lies from the Left tonight about Jewish issues. The Moms for Liberty Adolf Hitler quote was intended to refer to the Hitler Youth, and the Hitler Youth taught critical race theory to children, to teach them to murder Jews, Blacks, LGBTQ persons, handicapped persons, et cetera. As a Jewish-American, I don't want the Democrat Party's version of the Hitler Youth As a Jewish American, I don't want the Democrat Party's version of the Hitler Youth taught to my own children. The Democrat Party is an anti-Semitic, Jew-hating, Israel-hating hate group that is equivalent to the Ku Klux Klan to me, and they don't need to call me names.
Order.
Laura Montgomery.
Ladies and gentlemen, order please.
Laura Montgomery, followed by Kristen Bruno, followed by Michelle Minella. Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Laura Montgomery. Believe it or not, I have nine grandchildren that I will protect at all costs from pornography until the day I die. God has led me to recite this, Matthew 18:6. "But if anyone causes one of these children who believe in me to sin, it would be better for him to have a large millstone hung around his neck and to be drowned into the depths of sea." Books that include pornography and other subjects inappropriate for minors should not be available to them at any public school, and anyone who condones them needs a head check. Here are some excerpts from a book that is in seven SCPS libraries and is also digital. "I want to know when you went all gay, not only whore, not only a whore, but a lesbian whore. Just when the fuck did that happen? No wonder, no wonder you didn't want dick." Then again, some les's-like dildos. "Do you and your butch girl use those? Because I'd pay to watch. I bet I can round up a few friends. What do you think?" That's some real critical thinking there, and life-saving. Here's another one. "In my pocket, the camera bumps against my groin. The boner is gone, a sticky glaze left as a reminder inside my boxers. If you were for this, then you are so open-minded that your brain is falling out."
Order.
Here's another one. "Are they naked right now? Playing naked les games." Another one. "The rest of me is stripped to skin, my mouth is a perfect O, as I give myself to Danny's lips below my belly button and in between my open legs. And a tiny spot of glare or no, the camera caught everything." As if this isn't enough, another text, another photo, this is when she has pulled my sweater all the way off and ducked to kiss the inside of my knee, leaving the most intimate places-
Thank you, your time has expired.
Plus my face for the camera to see in proper-
Thank you, your time has expired.
Kristen Bruno, followed by Michelle Minella, followed by Chaz Barber. Good evening.
Testing, one, two. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, thank you.
Hi, my name is Super Kristen. And, well, I'm here to talk. I brought my dog with me. Hello, how are you doing? How you doing? I'm a girl. You were neutered. You'll always be a boy. All right. Okay. Now, let's get down to it, okay? Pretty much everybody said what I was going to say, but I'm going to just do a quick synopsis here. Some of yous might have figured out the game. They used the word banned books. How many times, oop, this way. Banned books, okay? How many times have we heard that expression, banned books tonight? They're not banned. They're just used in an appropriate, in an appropriate time and place, okay? They're not banned. I repeat. The regressives will keep saying banned. Keep saying the same word over and over. They're not banned. Okay? Okay, I have excerpts from a book like everybody else. I'm not going to read it because I'm afraid some of you might start masturbating in your chair. So I'm not gonna-
Order.
So I'm not going to do that, okay? As far as the time and place, as an engineer, I'm used to studying things that will give you an opportunity to get a job later. Not to be a prostitute in training. That's what these books do. You can read these, half of them sound like, you know, lesbians home alone reading finger-in-themselves books. Okay? That's what the, let's be real, let's be real. And do it at home. But the kids shouldn't be reading this stuff, okay? I noticed there was no talk about censorship on the Internet. They want to take away words out of the books on the Internet. You know, tearing down statues? Know what that is? That's tearing down history.
Thank you, your time has expired.
That's history books.
Thank you, your time has expired. Order.
Hi, thank you. Michelle Minella, followed by Chaz Barber, followed by Nova Shafnit. Good evening. Excuse me, Member Davis, you're not recognized. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, Michelle.
My name is Michelle Minella. Despite what those bustin' from across the state might think, no one here wants to ban diverse literature. We simply want to restrict porn, which is already prohibited, to be accessed by children. There is no reason a book about teacher-student sex belongs in Seminole schools. "He really is a terrific teacher. Looking good, Hannigan," he says quietly, "but he's not looking at her formula bubbling merrily over the burner. He's looking down her shirt as she's leaning over." "We both know, don't we," he says, "why you wanted to come here this evening." Janie gulps, "We do? Yes, and don't feel badly about it, because I'm attracted to you too." "But," he continues, "I can't have a relationship with you while you're my student." He tips her chin up. His fingers linger on her face. "But once you graduate," he says with a look in his eye, "well, that's a different story." Janie watches in horror as the guy removes Lauren's clothing, shoves his jeans down to his knees. The guy pushes Lauren to the floor, falling on top of her. Lauren is screaming, muffled. She's being crushed. Janie's numb, her body shakes. She's had enough, but it's too horrible. She watches in horror as Lauren fights, tearing uselessly at the people on top of her, shouting, "No, stop, no." "Oh, cool," Janie says, "you have that porn magazine in there? Lots of them," he says, "not that I need them with you here." She follows him through a dazed and half-naked crowd. On the way to Mr. Durbin's bedroom, Janie waves at Coach Crater. "Hey," he says, turning back to Mr. Durnan, "wasn't Stacy here before? She's still here, Janie. She's fucking Chris in the other bedroom, so we can fucking hear." This kind of stuff is not appropriate in the school. It needs to go. Thank you.
Chaz Barber, followed by Nova Shafnit, followed by Mark Sellers. It's public comment time, if you can wait. Did you need a break? You don't have the floor. I'm just asking. It's only for emergency. Okay, thank you. I'll call on us, the board, afterward, after public comment. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Chaz Barber. I'm a Seminole County resident, and I graduated from Lake Mary High School in 1995.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for your time this evening. I was invited here to read excerpts from a book. That's been done. And I, you know, tonight we've heard many accolades and trust being given to the certified professionals who are advising and selecting the media within our school libraries. We also heard earlier from tonight from Dr. Scanlon about the measures being taken to ensure that the media in our schools meets a specific set of standards. She shared that that media criteria must be free of material prohibited under the Florida statute S. 847.012. Someone earlier tonight read that. It's a, it's a third-degree felony to violate that law. That's being done in our schools. Who is holding? Who's accountable? Who's accountable for this law that's being broken currently, right now? Is it you women of the board? Is it our police? Who's accountable? Are these trusted and certified professionals actually doing their job? Based on what we've heard tonight? I would say they're not. Please consider the law and your responsibility to uphold it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Nova Shafnit, Mark Sellers, and Quinn Swerington. Hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening. I'm Nova Shafnit. I do live in Seminole County, own a house. I have four kids here. Okay, so I have a book. It is called Burned. And this book is, all right, has sexual activity, which we just heard is a third-degree felon to even have this book in our libraries. Drug and alcohol abuse, profanity, derogatory terms, suicidal ideation, and violence, including child abuse. This is a minor restricted, rated three out of five. "Saturday's became drinking days. Didn't think the irony lost one iota on me. Derek would meet me in the desert, painkillers in hand, first beer, then the hard stuff. The only thing I insisted on was no Johnny WB. Okay, it's weird psychology, but something inside of me maintained only Johnny could hook me for good. The higher I got, the harder it got to hang on to my jeans. Derek was skillful, coloring his need to look like a desire, like I was all he ever wanted. But as I do know, things began to spin and get out of control after my very first sex dream. As sex dreams go, there wasn't much sex, just a collage of very hot kisses and Justin Proud's hands exploring every inch of my body at my fervent invitation. As a stalwart Mormon, high school junior, drilled ceaselessly about the dire catastrophe awaiting those who harbored impure thoughts, I had never kissed a boy. I had never even considered that I might enjoy such an unclean thing until literature opened my eyes." We're not trying to remove curriculum literature. We're trying to remove pornography from our schools. Just like everyone else said, this is a felon to have these books in our library.
Thank you, your time has expired.
Thank you. Mark Sellers, Quinn Swerington, followed by Salvador Vera. Good evening.
Evening. I'm a resident of Seminole County. Both my children graduated from Seminole schools. I've been here for many years. I love books. I have hundreds of books at home. I've given away hundreds of books. I've read dozens and dozens of books. I mean, Catcher in the Rye, Kill a Mockingbird, The Hobbit, 1984, Trinity, Exodus, more science and math books than I could possibly shake a stick at. And I had an opportunity to read this book, which is on the shelf here in the Seminole County schools. And I'd like to read an excerpt from that particular book. "And when I didn't stop you, you slid your hand across my belly. Your thumb touched the bottom of my bra, and your pinky touched the top of my underwear. Your fingers made a way under my bra. Sliding your thumb along the underside of my breasts, best ass in the freshman class. And then, just like that, I let go. My shoulders went limp, my legs fell apart. Just relax, everything will be okay, as if letting him finger me was going to cure all my problems. Your pinky made its way into the top of my panties, rolled back and forth from hip to hip. Then another finger slipped below, pushing your pinky further down, brushing again through my hair. That's all you needed. You started kissing my shoulder, my neck, sliding your fingers in and out, and you kept going. You didn't stop." That is not the Dire Van Frank. That is not Little Women. That's not Shakespeare. That's not Greek mythology. That's nothing like that. That is pornography. And the only issue on the table here tonight is pornography and children, right? We want our children to be exposed to as much as they possibly can be exposed. We want them to have all the knowledge of the world. We do not need to have them exposed to pornography. And we, as parents and the school system, have an obligation to remove that pornography from the, from the public schools, to take it away from their children. And if you don't, anybody thinks that I'm not, I don't have any fans, just look at all the fans out there with their red signs.
Order.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Quinn Swerington, Salvador Vera, and Kelly Shilson.
Hello. As an organizer for Equality Florida, we stand for a future of, a future of Florida where all families are respected and all students are protected. We work towards a day where Florida schools are free from hatred, fear, and bigotry, and are actually funded. A dream for Florida schools that the opposition, that the opposition in this room hates. It's instead their dream to have a regime of fear, a regime of hatred, a regime of bigotry. Let's make it clear, no matter what they say over and over and over, it's not about book bans. Some of the folks who came here with a singular goal to get this district to get rid of several titles tonight. They wanted to do that using a provision in the final version of House Bill 1069. This provision allows for parents to object to a specific book and read material that they are objecting to in the meeting. This provision would also mandate that if a speaker objecting to a book is stripped of their speaking privileges by the board for content of the book they are reading out loud, that book must be removed from the county, effectively banning the book in the public schools. They will claim that they are not book banners, and that they want to save public schools and the children in them. But if that's the case, then why would some of the groups here publicly post that their goal was to get books struck tonight using this exact tactic on their social media as early as a couple hours ago? Why would they be handing out these excerpts of objectionable material without context to attendees as they walked in? Let's name them. Why would Moms for Liberty instruct their supporters to take part in these actions that they know could and probably would get books banned? Why would they do this, especially when there's a proper procedure in place as put forward at the start of this meeting? Why wouldn't they just use that instead? Well, one, for the spectacle, and two, to get it done without having to do any of that work, to make you all look bad. It's because of what they are, book banners, intimidators and fear mongers, hell-bent on destroying public schools more than the state already has, and scaring parents, and scaring parents, families, and faculty that are different from them out of public life. Don't let them tell you anything different. Don't let them go to the public library either, since we know those are on their hit list too. Don't believe them when they say you can't. They will fail here tonight.
Thank you, your time has expired.
They will fail there as they failed here tonight.
Thank you, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Order.
Salvador Vera, Kelly Shilson, Louizian Averas. Hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening. Thank you Chair Kraus, Board, and Superintendent Beeman. My name is Salvador Vera. I am a field manager with Equality Florida. I want to start out by thanking you for always standing up for all students, especially our most marginalized, in times when they are being attacked relentlessly. I also want to mention the insensitive comments made by the gentleman about adults in school. He has absolutely excluded any students held back, any students with developmental disabilities, or seniors who turn 18 during the school year. There are plenty of 18-plus students in public schools. I want to use my time to highlight the extremist groups targeting our school boards, like Moms for Liberty, and their heinous attempts to ban books in Seminole County schools. By using a provision of HB 1069, they hope to get books banned by reading passages from books out of context, provoking you to tell them to stop speaking. Thank you for standing tall against this assault on education. Our students, all of our students deserve access to literature, to stories, because everyone deserves to see themselves reflected in stories. And that means our LGBTQ+ and Black students as well. Instead of leaning into these heinous book bans, let's talk about what our kids do need. In the wake of HB 1521, our trans and non-binary students and staff have no way to use bathrooms affirming their gender. Please, work to find ways to implement gender-neutral bathrooms in all Seminole County public schools. We can uplift and support all kids, so let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Order. Order, please.
Kelly Shilson, followed by Louizian Nunes, followed by Monte Floyd. Hi, good evening.
Good evening, Superintendent Beeman and our school board members. My name is Kelly Shilson, and I live in Seminole County. And just as I suspected, this group that has shown up tonight does not represent our county.
Order.
They have come in to try and overtake our community and not represent our, our community. So please, please keep that in mind when you're making your decisions. I want to start out by saying I'm all for free speech, and I'm even for controversial speech. We all need to have the ability to have civil conversations without being demonized. However, when someone can't defend their position, they tend to attack others, personally attack them. And if you noticed, we don't stoop that low.
Order. Ladies and gentlemen, order, allow the speaker to speak.
In my opinion, we're not the ones that are trying to limit anyone's free speech. However, we are trying to limit pornography in our schools. So I am all for the books of Anne Frank, by Anne Frank, and I Know Why the Caged Bird Sings by Maya Angelou, and our classics. This is not what this is about. This is about grooming our children. And we need to put, we're only marginalizing, only some areas are marginalizing people, I'm just saying, and calling people racist and discriminating against that. That is not what we stand for. So no matter what they spew, this group is a good group, and they really do care about our kids. And I think we could really work together to just eliminate a few, it's a few books out of thousands- few books out of thousands. We're talking, I think there's 53 books on the list. Out of thousands of books, we're not talking about book banning. So please keep that in mind. I also ask that you request scholastic, follow your decision.
Thank you, your time has expired.
Louie Zian Nunes, followed by Monte Floyd, followed by Jessica Tillman. Good evening.
Good afternoon. My name is Luciana Elteresia Nunes. I am 21 years old. I have a bachelor's degree from the University of Central Florida. I'm a JD candidate, and I currently work at the litigation paralegal. I'm here today to discuss my concerns with books that are minor restricted, yet they are accessible in libraries to children. More specifically, I would like to discuss a novel. It is a tale about a young girl who loses her virginity at eight years old. She later falls victim to sex trafficking, sexual abuse, drug abuse, and self-destructive behaviors such as cutting her own skin. The book begins by explaining the child's suicidal thoughts. On page 10, it describes how she wonders how her father would react to her suicidal actions. She quickly dismisses his thoughts and continues to say, "I should have put the gun to my head, worried less about brain damage, more about getting dead." Finish. Next, the book covers serious drug addiction and use. On page 13, it covers how she mentions how she started with weed, which is a gateway drug, and then how she moved on to crystal and prescription drugs. It goes on in detail how she mixed heroin with Jack Daniels and a bottle of Valium. This is a problem because a young child cannot understand nor grasp how dangerous these drugs are. On page 18, it describes in details how she starts self-harming, and it felt good. She says that when she cuts her skin, it helps shush the demons in her head. She details how good it felt to feel the blood rush out of her and stain her bathtub. She goes on to explain how her younger brother walks in on her in the bathroom and screams in horror. This book is very graphic in its description of rape and how at times she even liked it. Page 64 describes how she learned at a young age when to shut her mouth and when to scream, when to glom onto the guy with power, tap, and suck really hard. Page 71 describes how she had sex with her teachers at eight years old. Page 322 covers her abortion and how she regrets it, but she loves the baby, but she feels really good about making it die. The issue with this adult novel in public schools is that children are not mentally equipped to deal with these sensitive topics.
Thank you, your time has expired.
Thank you. Monte Floyd, followed by Jessica Tillman, followed by Tracy Kagan. Hi, good evening.
Evening. Thank you, Board. Monte Floyd, and tonight I proudly identify as a taxpayer of Seminole County. So now let's dispel the kooky and favorite go-to dialectic fallacy used by many groomers here tonight. For the record, Moms for Liberty has never called for banning of books, and to date, not one book has ever been banned as a result of any challenge by Moms for Liberty, period. If the peanut gallery wants to read these horrible books, feel free to go buy them on Amazon or check them out from the public library. Also, remember, child abuse is not a right, let alone a parental right, and exposing children, yours or others, to graphic pornography is not your right, and it's very much against the law. So with that said, I'm going to read from Exit Here, a book that is available in this school district, to children as young as 14. This book has no beneficial educational quality whatsoever, and it glorifies underage drug use, incest, pedophilia, suicide, and get this, even the casual murder of trans people. So on page 86, let's jump into the incest portion. "I was thrown by what I was seeing. Cliff's mother buck-naked, perched on her knees, giving Cliff a blowjob. Cliff had his hand cemented to the back of her brown hair, controlling her head's every movement, bobbing it back and forth. And it was so intense, I stuck around. I watched Cliff pull his stepmother's head back and spit in her mouth." Wow, really want my 14-year-old kids reading that. And then let's go to page 898. "I ran to your sister, Cliff says. So what? I hooked her and her friends up with OxyContin's. I thought they wanted X. They did, he says, but the dudes I talked to about it only had OxyContin's on them. Last December, they double-teamed some trans vestite who apparently had her dick surgically removed. And when they found out that that girl had been really a boy once, they fucking killed it." So that's the type of material that's in the Seminole County School District. You need to find out who's putting this here. Whatever media specialist is doing this needs to be fired. You're in violation of the law. Thank you.
Your time has expired. Thank you. Your time has expired. Sir, excuse me. Order, please. Jessica Tillman, followed by Tracy Kagan, followed by Julia Roberts. Hi, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Tillman. I'm chapter chair for Moms for Liberty, Seminole County. We have worn their pornographic books in Seminole County for more than a year. As Moms for Liberty, we made plenty of local news and even national news on this issue. We, schools should not be providing sexually explicit content to students. Parents who think their children should be exposed can buy them for themselves. We reject the false narrative that we are banning books. Shame on the superintendent for knowingly and willingly ignoring this illegal material due to paperwork. Procedures are not law, but it is the law that you cannot knowingly provide pornography to minors. This district is now knowingly breaking the law. Because the board and the superintendent neglected to do the right thing, parents, grandparents, and taxpayers had to act bravely. They feel, they felt it was necessary to read these horrible passages aloud at the podium in hopes to inform others. It is important that we take note of which board members alongside the superintendent were silent to keep sexually explicit books on the school library's shelves. The superintendent should be fired for ignoring pornographic material for two weeks over paperwork, never once reaching out to me in an attempt to have a quick resolution. Thank you to all the brave parents, grandparents, and community members who showed up tonight and read from these disgusting, illegal books. Thank you for not giving up and being the positive change for children. You are the real heroes and champions for parental rights, children, and families. We are excited about the progress we have made, but we have much more work to do. We at Moms for Liberty are just getting started. Thank you.
Thank you. Order, please. Tracy Kagan, followed by Julia Roberts, followed by Thomas Burgos. Hi, good evening.
Good evening, Board. How are you? My name is Tracy Kagan. I've lived in Seminole County for 27 years, and I've had all three daughters through Seminole County Schools. I was a voracious reader in high school, and to this day, I remember how books like Upton Sinclair's The Jungle, Yellow Wallpaper, or The Handmaid's Tale by Margaret Atwood opens your mind to shift perspectives and see the world differently. That is what education is, shifting minds. Someone earlier said, vicarious learning, vicarious learning. School is not just about sitting in a classroom and getting the Socratic method of learning. It's about the books we read, the people we meet, opening up your mind and challenging your perspective and shifting it. So I also was struck by the fact that, growing up, we read these books. How horrible did we turn out? I guess I'm a lawyer for 27 years, and I turned out really horrible reading of Mice and Men and The Handmaid's Tale with all of the disgusting things that they allude that are in these books. So let me just say this in conclusion. I stand in agreement with the statements made tonight regarding the facade of protesting children using metaphors of protecting liberty. I stand in unison with the belief that banning books is a form of mind control. I stand in unison with the concept that we are on the verge of authoritarianism, and it starts with book banning. What's next? Closing school libraries like they did in Texas? Let's deal with real issues. Perhaps the women or the moms should think about, where was their outrage over Nazis marching in Seminole County displaying hate and intolerance to our children? Where was the outrage over permitless carry for our children? Where was the outrage over the amount of homeless children living in cars in Seminole County unable to eat? I task each and every one of you on the board.
Thank you, your time has expired, ma'am. Thank you. Julia Roberts, followed by Thomas Burgos, followed by Jana Warnicki. Hi, good evening.
Hi, my name is Julia Roberts. I am a resident of Seminole County and mother of five beautiful babies. I do not believe the book from which I may or may not get to read to tonight, to read several excerpts from, contain any benefit to students to enlighten or expand their worldview, increase their empathy, think through ideas or different experiences. Critical thinking can be taught through Latin, math, non-pornographic literary novels. Are there not other non-pornographic books available to help children share or process their abuse or other difficult situations? Calling porn literature is a bit of a stretch. Not to mention, the characters of these books are also minors, so this is distributing child pornography. The law recognizes that children aren't physically and emotionally mature enough to handle the responsibility attached to certain activities. Therefore, the law implements ages of majority designed to define when a person has the ability to exercise his or her rights responsibly, including when they are mature enough to handle mature content. If you want your children's curiosities expanded in this way, take them to the public libraries. However, I suggest researching the impact of pornography on a developing brain to understand how it may impact your child. Some have said this is a culture war. I agree, a culture is fragile. Culture built on pornography inhaling disrespect is a virtue will reap itself, a nation no longer capable of sustaining itself. As a parent, it is my job to raise my children, not the judgments of teachers or professionals or media experts. I am my child's expert. Red herring is a fallacy that attempts to redirect our conversation away from its original topic. We are not banning books. We are not diminishing or devaluing anyone's experience. We are requesting explicit content be reserved for adults. If choking on a cock and getting raped in the ass isn't shocking anymore as a culture, where are we going? What's the next shocking literature we can inculcate on our children? How far are we willing to go as a society? An ad hominem is a fallacy that occurs when instead of addressing someone's argument or position, you irrelevantly attack the person, i.e. calling us bigots, book banners, hate groups, closed-minded extremists, narcissists, et cetera. The following book is available at Lake Howell High School, Lake Mary High School.
Thank you, your time has expired.
Thomas Burgos, followed by Jana Warnicki. Hi, good evening. Again.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Joe Bugus II. I am a Seminole County, oh, you want me to get closer? I'm not loud enough. So good evening. And I'm here to talk about veteran teachers. I know book banning is the big issue of the evening, but given the fact that we have ratified our contract and we are looking at veteran teachers in the future, we need to understand that none of the teachers here are teaching pornography. None of them are teaching or grooming the children to be, I don't know what they want to think we're grooming them for, but we're not doing that. We're doing a job because we're passionate. I'm a trained turbine mechanic. I can rebuild jet engines and get in the jet and fly and feel safe enough to actually land again and be alive. I can do that. I don't have to teach. I do it because I'm passionate. I have the skills and the ability to teach young minds for the future of this nation. And I teach them that they can have those critical thinking skills that they need to survive out in the rural world, things that do include pornography, that do include cursing and sex and drugs and all these horrible things that we hate to see them go through, but it's reality. It's going to impact them in some way, whether it's not personally, their friends are going to go through it. And we need to have that conversation with them. But we also need to honor those teachers that are going through this. Your veteran teachers have been dealing with this for a very long time, and they need to be honored for it. They need to be recognized, either through pay increases. I started teaching here in 2006, $36,000. With cost of living, I'm still making that exact same amount today. And I have 23 years of service in teaching. So 18 here as an actual teacher and five for my service in the country. And I am not being honored for being a veteran of teaching or a veteran of this country. And I really think we need to do harder to get to this point. So everything you've heard tonight, your teachers are hearing that, and they're taking it hard because they're not here for that purpose. They're here for the passion and love of teaching, and that's what they want to do.
Thank you, your time has expired.
Thank you. Order, please. Order. Jana Warnicki.
Hi, good evening. Good evening. Members of the board, I want you to imagine a school librarian or a teacher reading this out loud to a class full of students. Ray likes how smooth I am, how raw my skin is. It burns by the time he's done touching it. No breakfast tomorrow, he says afterwards. I think you might be over 100 pounds. That's not acceptable. At bedtime, he rumples his sheets. We have a two-bedroom apartment because we are father and daughter, and he wants to take care of me. He wants me to have my own room like other little girls, and then crawls into the tiny bed with me. People, I ask you, does that make you feel uncomfortable? Well, it should. It's a long, detailed story of child rape. While we believe this is a real concern, the book Living Dead Girl paints a profound and emotional disturbing scenario. To be clear, this isn't about censoring voices or restricting freedoms. It's about recognizing this is not age-appropriate for any child. We wouldn't show a rated R movie to a elementary school student, so why would we allow them to have unfiltered access to a book like this? My name is Jana Warnicki, and I represent the Florida Chapter of Gays Against Groomers. I stand before you tonight driven by a responsibility I believe we all share, the safety and well-being of all children. We are not against diverse or inclusion literature in schools. We believe that certain topics are relevant, but they should be introduced with care, sensitivity, and most importantly, age-appropriateness. As guardians of our children's welfare, it is our duty and responsibility to ensure that their educational journey is not only enlightening, but also safe. I urge you, members, to please think of our innocent children's well-being, their emotional health, and let's protect them by creating a library that provides without...
Thank you, your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, board members, that was the last speaker. So if, I don't know if you have final comments, but I would like to go through the roll call order. Abby Sanchez, Vice Chair.
First of all, I want to say thank you to everybody for being respectful to each other. On that note, we had what's called Running for Heroes. A student from Seminole County started the program, Zachariah Cartridge. In the few years that they've had, they started it. We now have a facility, and they work with the school districts with it. Thank you, Ms. Faison, for helping create the field trips, as well as I know Mr. Senko and Dr. Gucci as well, for our students to see the displays from 9/11, our fallen heroes, first responders, and so on and so forth. On 9/11 this year, last week, I guess, we did a run, and of course, they always have the police officers there and many first responders. It was a really emotional time. And I just want to say that after 9/11, everybody united, came together. Nobody cared what political background you were. Nobody cared about anything. We just came together as a country and united. And during that presentation, I was not expecting it, but I go to a lot of the runs, as you all know. And Zachariah, who has spoken around the entire country, has been on pretty much most national TV shows, gave us the Freedom Flag in honor of Seminole County School Board, in honor of our school board members, in honor of all of our phenomenal employees. And I just wanted to present this to our superintendent. This was very emotional, was not expecting the flag to be handed to me, but it shows unity. And it shows that we can all work together, respect each other, and be, and I saw somebody, I've seen this shirt, the humankind. And we can all pull together, work together, learn from each other, and that's what it's about, learning from each other, listening to the pros, the cons, and listening and respecting. So I do appreciate all of that. And in honor of Zachariah and all the fabulous runners that we have, I'd like to give this
Thank you, Vice Chair. Next, Member Pennick, do you have any final comments?
I just want to say thank you to Dr. Scanlon for your presentation, for you and your team of one, all that you do to keep us in compliance with the law. It is not easy. It is a lot of work, and I know it is a work in process. I thank everyone for coming out and being respectful and sharing each of your perspectives. That is our duty to listen to you, and I appreciate you taking your time to come out. And I look forward to continuing watching the hard work that the school district is doing to make sure that we are within the law with all of the materials. The laws change constantly, and sometimes we have to be more reactive than we can, proactive, and... reactive than we can, proactive, and I think, unfortunately, because there are only two people in that department, they are doing the best that they can. So I appreciate you, and I recognize that, and I thank you for your presentation tonight.
Thank you. Member Davis.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, and I'm sorry that I was going to interrupt. I should have waited to the end, but at the time, I wasn't going to comment on your comments or discuss anything with you, but I started to realize, ignoring everybody's affiliation with any sort of group, we're all moms, dads, grandparents, members of the community who just care about education and children. We have teachers here who have a different perspective, and I appreciate the chance to listen to all of those perspectives. And I assume the reason you come to speak here is to let the school board know your perspective and your opinions and the things that you care about. And the reason I wanted to interrupt at that time, because I thought we were doing really, really well as far as respecting other people speaking, respecting the decorum of the room. Nobody was really shouting or clapping that much, and I really appreciated it. But then there became a time towards the end, and that's why I wanted to interrupt, so you could see the difference into what happened later on, where we were not respecting each other very well. And things were said nasty to other people, and that's not what we're about here. We really want to listen to every side. And as a school board member, I absorb, now that your comments are over, I absorb that you all care about certain issues. There was passion in reading those excerpts, even though they were not necessarily in context or maybe not appropriate. I understood why some of you felt that you needed to read those, so we understood where you're coming from. Whether we agree or not is not the issue. It's we need to understand where you're coming from. And then we had other people who spoke about the value in these books and how it affected people's lives and how they still think there's a reason why it's necessary in school. And I understood that perspective now. And this is all things that the school board members here need to absorb from all sides, and we cannot do that if we have people clapping in between or saying nasty stuff. All along, we had signs going up, green and red. We had some thumbs going up and thumbs going down. And I just wanted to tell you my expectation as a board member and what I expect from the community and what I will give back to you. I want to pay attention to every single person there, and I will do that. But I need your cooperation with that, and that's an expectation between all of us and all of you, because we all want the same thing. We all want the best things for our children and other people's children, if you don't have one here in Seminole County. And that's why you come. I don't really think that anybody came here just to blow wind. I think you all came here with a purpose, and whether you agree with the perspective of each other is not important. It's that we hear all of those perspectives. And we cannot do that if we're constantly having our school attorney here have to say, order. And we had a lot of people today, and I was really glad that everybody came out. I told you at the beginning, I appreciate you coming out and expressing your thoughts. But if I can't hear them because there's interruptions, then I can't absorb all of those perspectives. And what we have to do as a society is to listen to everyone. We can make our own decisions, but we cannot be ignorant that there are other sides to the story, there's other concerns that we might not have thought of, even if we disagree. And that's my job, and I hope that's the job of the rest of the school board, and I think it is, and the job of the superintendent. We have these meetings so we can understand your perspective and your concerns. And so, my expectation is that we're not going to be doing this all of the time. We're going to try to follow the decorum of the room. And that's just because my job, I feel, is so important that I want to hear what every single person has to say. And I know it was long, and we got tired, and we didn't have many breaks, but I think stating my expectations at least, and maybe you have expectations of us, that we'd love to hear about, you can always email me. I think that we're going to be such a great community for our kids here. I think every person here had something valuable to say, and I love that. And I just want to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, and you're doing what you're supposed to be doing. And I really appreciate listening to your rant. I hope I'm not lecturing here, but I really felt it was important at the time to state so you could see how things had gotten changed. And, you know, I respect all of you, and I know that most of you are doing what you're supposed to do and being very calm and collective about things, and some of you are not. But as a group, we need to work on that. That's it. And I hope that if there's things that you want us to work on, that you let me know. I appreciate all of you, though.
Thank you so much, Member Davis. Member Gary.
First of all, I want to go back to Dr. Scanlon and her team. By my calculations, you have catalogued and reviewed nearly a million books, and I know that it's through the great work of your team, as well as I'm looking out and seeing many educators in the crowd, so thank you. I want to also show my appreciation for all of the stakeholders here that care about public education. I specifically want to say a huge thank you to our invested stakeholders. Those are the people that entrust SCPS with the education of your children, for those of you who serve on our PTA, for those of you who are teachers, for those of you who day in and day out do your best at the administrative level to make sure that we stay lawful, as it was said to me yesterday by a very esteemed educator. Not all laws are good. And as board members, we don't get to say in which laws we think are good or bad. It's up to us to uphold our constitutional duty, to abide by the laws, create policy that provides for excellence in education in Seminole County public schools. There was some misinformation tonight. I never received a list. I, in fact, have never heard from a parent, not one parent, in my 10 months of service has complained that they wanted a book reviewed or removed from SCPS, which leads me to believe that the information isn't getting to us. I am happy to make sure that we are diligent in our process. It is the law that we follow certain guidelines for books and materials in our schools. I am available by phone. I am available by email. I am out and about all the time. Look at my Facebook. I am out in our schools nearly every day in the community, listening to constituents, listening to stakeholders, because I believe in Seminole County public schools. We do not have teachers that are groomers. We do not have a superintendent that is evading the law. We have the most talented, dedicated people, and the vast majority of our parents agree, and that is why they send their students to Seminole County public schools. And I thank them each and every day, and I thank those of you who are teachers and educators, and I look to support you, because we need to support our students, because they are our future. Thank you.
Order, please. Order, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, board members, and thank you, audience. It's late. We missed our waffle cutoff. Member Sanchez, Vice Chair Sanchez said if we were done by 10, she's buying Waffle House. We didn't get done. I thank you all for being so respectful. This is a process, and we're working our way through it. Dr. Scanlon, you and your team have our utmost praise. Maxine McClory, we will thank every media specialist, every teacher for scanning books in all summer, and we appreciate all of your comments. Thank you so much. Superintendent, any final remarks? Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.